Good evening. We will begin the October 7, 2024, meeting with the annual fall tour with the Maryland Department of Transportation to hear about the consolidated transportation plan in Anarundel County. If time allows, we'll take a quick break before beginning our legislative session at 7:00 PM. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We're going to welcome a few people that I see in the audience here. We're going to welcome the county executive, Stuart Pittman. I saw delegate Gary Simmons, I believe. Thank you, sir, for being here. No one actually RSVP'd, so if you are here and you're an elected official, please stand and I will try to recognize you. Oh, there's Senator Clarence Lamb. Thank you for coming. We will now welcome Secretary Wiedfeld and other esteemed colleagues from the Maryland Department of Transportation for the annual CTP tour.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us for the annual tour. First, I did want to thank the county staff for taking the time to visit us at Mako. The conference serves as a great opportunity to connect and understand how we can partner together for projects that are both important to the county and to the state of Maryland. At Mako, we were asked about the status of a speed camera application along Maryland 175 and Jessup. We have reviewed the application and are working with the county to finalize the plans and issues of permits. So I just want to make sure that we do listen at those meetings and we get things moving quickly as we can. I will keep my opening comments brief, focusing on the update of the department's finances, since it obviously drives the investment levels in projects and services in Anarundel County. I will then turn the briefing over to representatives from the various modes to discuss in more detail projects and services specific to Anarundel County. And of course, at the annual taking questions that you may have. Before I go further, though, I did want to make a, take a moment to briefly discuss the Francis Scott Key Bridge. The collapse of this iconic bridge and the tragic loss of six workers continues to have a tremendous impact on the communities, commuters, and businesses. Thank you for your partnership during this tough time, and thank the county executive for all of his assistance during that period. The department has taken a holistic approach in mitigating the congestion on the transportation system by promoting alternative options and resources. The commuter choice Maryland program is working with businesses and commuters to promote options like transit, carpooling, teleworking, or flexible work schedules to try to reduce some of the congestion that we're seeing, that you're experiencing without that bridge. We've especially focused on our efforts to provide employers and commuters with programs and resources in the Baltimore region following the destruction, obviously, of the Key Bridge. We'll continue to work closely with you and your team to mitigate any traffic issues that impact neighborhoods and local roads, because that's another concern of everyone. The Maryland Transportation Authority is fast-tracking to rebuild a bridge over the next four years. In August, the Transportation Authority Board approved a contract for the progressive design build, and thank you for letting one of your staff members be on that board. Just to be clear, the Transportation Authority Board, Transportation Authority is funded through toll revenues. It collects and is separate from the state's transportation trust fund, which we'll be discussing here further in a minute. We're continuing to work with the Maryland's federal delegation to get 100% emergency relief funding by the federal government to rebuild the Key Bridge. Securing 100% funding is vital to, as no state, local government, or agency is prepared to cover a $1.7 billion unexpected cost. The timing and amount of that funding is uncertain, but regardless, the state will pursue the Dolly and its owners for all costs to rebuild the bridge and all damages suffered by the state. Regarding MDOT finances, as you may recall, last year's CTP required a $3.3 billion in reductions between operating and capital budgets. Thanks to Governor Moore's one-time funding from the state's rainy day fund and the additional estimated $1.8 billion in revenues passed by the General Assembly last year, MDOT was able to reduce the level of reductions needed to balance the budget. For example, with these funds, we were able to maintain commitments to local governments to restore the highway user revenue, which is so important to the county, and also the locally operated transit grants. Turning now to this year's draft CTP for fiscal years '25 through 2030, the department continues to face significant budgetary challenges because of the state's slow economic growth, the rising cost of labor materials, and revenues coming lower than projections. For example, the motor fuel tax revenue, the state's, the state transportation trust fund's largest source, have come in lower than projected by roughly $350 million, while at the same time, operating costs have increased by nearly $300 million. As a result of these financial pressures, the department is making strategic investments with our limited resources to further enhance the safety of our system and maintain operations. Getting into the details, the draft CTP is balanced, as required by state law, and totals $18.9 billion over the whole program period. However, because of the fiscal constraints, we had to make tough decisions and reductions to live within our means. This has resulted in a reduction of roughly $1.3 billion compared to last, last year's final CTP. Even with these reductions, MDOT is committed to strategically using available resources to advance the state's priorities. The number one priority has been and always will be safety, the safety of everyone who uses the transportation system, including those who walk, bike, and work on our transportation network. For example, this summer, I signed an updated department-wide complete streets policy. The updated policy will support Maryland's vision zero goal to rapidly reduce traffic fatalities and serious injuries to zero by 2030. The state highway administration is already moving through planning, design, and construction phases to transform five corridors in Maryland's into complete streets, including along Maryland 2 Ritchie Highway in Glen Burnie. We have also partnered with Smart Growth America to host a Complete Streets Leadership Academy aimed at deploying cost-effective, quick-build safety pilot projects. These projects are targeted at areas with a history of traffic fatalities or crashes. Also, we continue to partner with local governments to seek federal grants to invest in needed traffic calming and pedestrian safety improvements. In addition to our focus on safety, the department will continue to make strategic investments that support Maryland's families and the economy of the state. Some examples include advancing electric vehicle charging stations and new federally-funded resiliency and carbon reduction projects across the state. Funding the Howard Street Tunnel to support the growth of the port and with its creation of thousands of family-sustaining careers. Funding the AB Connector Project to support the continual operation and passenger experience at BWI Thurgood Marshall Airport. Funding of the Frederick Douglass Tunnel Project with Amtrak. Supporting the project development process for the Baltimore Red Line and advancing public infrastructure work and enhancements for the FBI headquarters relocation in Greenbelt. Now, I'd like to hand it over to Administrator Arnold at the Maryland Transit Administration to begin the local updates by the modes.
Thank you, Secretary. Thank you all for having us here today. For the record, my name is Holly Arnold, and I'm the administrator of the Maryland Transit Administration. A safe, reliable rider-focused public transit system remains key to growing and strengthening our state. It means decreased carbon emissions, reduction in traffic congestion, and safer streets. A robust public transit system also means economic and social mobility. In fiscal year 2024, MTA's $1.3 billion in spending had an economic impact of $2.9 billion for our state. The work that we do supported more than 24,000 jobs across the state. The draft CTP continues that investment. Notably, the CTP involves project development funding for the Red Line, with an investment of more than $150 million going towards this vitally important investment in Baltimore's transit infrastructure. Work also continues on the Frederick Douglass Tunnel. The tunnel will provide significant safety, reliability, and speed improvements for Mark and Amtrak, in addition to a new ADA-accessible West Baltimore Mark station. We're also competing, completing major state-of-good-repair investments in our metro subway system, with several new railcars having already arrived and undergoing testing. Our metro project includes investment in a state-of-the-art communications-based train control system that's being installed right now. Finally, we are advancing our light rail modernization program to provide new, modern light railcars and stations to the system that will significantly improve reliability and create opportunities for more frequent service. With that said, as the secretary noted, the CTP does reflect some difficult choices to defer some state-of-good-repair investments. However, I want to be clear that safety remains a top priority. Regular inspections and repairs will continue to ensure that the system is safe and reliable for our riders. More than 59% of our CCP supports keeping our systems operating. In addition to MTA's investments, locally-operated transit systems are critical partners in providing transit throughout the state. MTA has implemented a new funding allocation formula, which has made the distributions more equitable and responsive to changes in local jurisdictions' investment in transit service. The new formula benefits Anarundel County with an increase of more than $1.7 million in operating funds. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and I'm now going to turn it over to Bruce Gardner from MDTA.
Thank you, Holly. Again, Bruce Gardner with the Executive Director for the Maryland Transportation Authority. I'm going to start off with the Bay Bridge. Would like to talk about the $28 million Chesapeake Bay Crossing Study that we have ongoing. We continue to focus on the selective corridor, or corridor seven, which is the two-mile-wide path that extends from the Severn River Bridge to US 5301 split. We've made tremendous progress over the past year. We expect to hold in-person and virtual open houses in early December to show the alternatives retained for a detailed study for the first time. The study team continues its tour of community events with engagement on the public about the study, and we anticipate completing the study in tier, the tier-two study in the winter of '25, '26. Moving on to current construction projects, as you know, the Bay Bridge is one of those facilities that is constantly undergoing construction. The current project is replacing the deck of the eastbound span, and that's about $140 million project. To minimize those impacts, we are utilizing off-peak lane closures overnight with two-way on the westbound spans. For each deck panel, the crews are removing one section of the bridge and replacing it with new pre-cast, pre-cast sections. As of last week, we had 43 of the 156 panels installed, and we anticipate the completion date for that package in the spring of 2025. As the secretary indicated, the Key Bridge has been part of our heavy focus. Over the last six months, we've done a number of things in the, with environmental approvals and contract awards. We're pleased to be able to be working directly with KiWIT, our progressive design builder on the contract, as of a few weeks ago. Engagement with local communities, commuters, elected officials, and small and minority business enterprises are critical to the project's success. The replacement of the bridge will be built with local inputs in mind and with new industry standards. The bridge rebuild will be complete, in our projection, by the fall of 2028. It's an aggressive timetable, but we are working as quickly as possible. As many of you, your constituents, know, they're feeling the impacts of this on the I-95 and 895 corridors. There is a project in our program to replace the existing toll plaza south of the Harbor Tunnel with highway-speed electronic tolling, but unfortunately, we need to put that project on a little bit of delay to make sure that we have the Key Bridge focused, because we don't want to impact any of the throughput on that facility. So we're rethinking some of the design, trying to get some early things out of the way as a two-step process for that project, so we continue on some of the side streets, but wait until the Key Bridge is open, until we impact that plaza. So as the secretary indicated, we are focusing with federal partners on the funding for the bridge and working with the Attorney General's Office on getting the Marylanders held whole for the damage that was done by other parties. We will be updating our financial forecasts before the end of the year to further adjust for any impacts of the Key Bridge, and I thank you for your time and attention today. I'll turn it over to Will from SHA.
Thank you, Bruce, and good evening, everyone. I'm Will Pine, State Highway Administrator, and I also want to take a moment to introduce SHA's District Engineer for District Five, Kim Tran. We thank her for her great work and her team on addressing local needs and providing constituent services for you in this region. SHA, we understand the fiscal challenge Maryland is facing. However, I want to assure you of two things. First, SHA will continue to do big things moving forward with multimodal projects that improve safety and accessibility and mobility and equity. Second, safety will always be our highest priority. This means building and maintaining a system that supports pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and all users, including our highway workers, will always be key. SHA has been a proud partner with our MDOT team members on the new complete streets policy, and we're putting it into action with the Complete Streets Leadership Academy projects. Another key tool in our toolbox is the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, or what we refer to as the PSAP. As you know, Maryland 2 from Mountain Road to Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard was selected among the first PSAP corridors. Less than two weeks ago, we hosted a public workshop for that project to get critical feedback from the community about the safety improvements for that corridor. These PSAP projects will play a big role in making our roadways safer and more accessible for everyone. One of my first asks of the team when I came on the job last year was also to enhance crosswalks statewide. In fiscal year 2024, we upgraded 1,009 crosswalks at 462 intersections across the state, and in Anarundel County specifically, we upgraded 25 crosswalks at 15 intersections across the county. Now, I'd like to highlight a few SHA projects this past year and thank the county for its support and partnership. This includes bridge maintenance and repair projects on Maryland 468 over Lurch Creek in Galesville. We also performed resurfacing and other improvements on Maryland 198, Maryland 32, Maryland 100, Interstate 97, and the Bayfront Road Park and Ride Lot in Bristol. And last month, we started a $10.8 million, 3.3-mile safety and resurfacing project along Maryland 100 from Maryland 170 to Maryland 3 Business. We also converted the flashing signal at Maryland 179 at Bush's Frontage Road to a full-color signal, and we installed new traffic signals at Maryland 179 at the Pleasant Plains Road and Old Mill Bottom Road intersections. We're continuing to construct the Maryland 214 sidewalk project in Edgewater. This project adds a new ADA-compliant sidewalk along westbound Maryland 214 from Maryland 2 to Maryland 253 near South River High School. We're also continuing construction on the new Maryland 175 and Maryland 295 interchange. This $77 million project replaces the Maryland 175 bridge over the Baltimore-Washington Parkway to improve capacity and traffic flow. As you saw on the draft CTP, the I-97 widening project has been deferred due to fiscal constraints. We will be pausing that project at 30% design, which is its logical stopping point, so that when funding becomes available, our team will be ready to pick the pencil back up. Although we've had to make reductions to our capital program, we will be able to move forward with several critical projects in Anarundel County, thanks to the incredible partnership that we have with the county in providing the match funding. We're continuing to design three projects to enhance pedestrian connectivity and address safety and traffic demand, including on Maryland 214 from Maryland 468 to Camp Letts Road, Maryland 3 from Maryland 175 to Wow Chapel, and Maryland 2 to between Arnold Road and US 50. In September, we attended a meeting with the Broadneck Council of Communities and discussed the ramp management project from Oceanic Drive to eastbound US 50, US 301. As you know, we conducted that ramp management project approaching the Bray Bridge as part of the continuing efforts to improve flow and safety on the Broadneck Peninsula during the peak summer travel times. We also regularly discuss that ramp management effort for both shores at the BRAG meetings and have received continued feedback from them that this year's efforts work well for that community. Finally, I'm pleased to announce a pair of grants to advance plans for the Blue Water Boulevard's shared use path between Odenton and BWI Thurgood Marshall Airport. The county will receive $708,000 from the Transportation Alternatives Program for construction and $141,600 from the Kim Lamphier Bike Ways Program, providing the match funds needed to unlock federal dollars and other grants. In addition, the County Department of Recreation and Parks will receive $560,000 in design funds from the Kim Lamphier Program for Phase Four of the two-mile-long mixed-use WBNA Trail in Odenton. So with that, while we must live within the means of our budget, as I mentioned before, we're still doing big things to move forward with important projects and programs throughout the county. And with that, I want to thank you again for your time, and I'll turn it over to my colleague, Leslie Doos, at the MVA.
Thank you, Will. I'm Leslie Doos, Deputy Administrator over at the MVA. Customer satisfaction has always been the cornerstone at the MVA, and as of September, the agency's overall satisfaction rate was 99.5%. By prioritizing efficiency and accessibility in the fiscal year 2024, MVA's average wait time was just five minutes, and that's despite completing 6.7% more transactions than the previous fiscal year. I'm also proud to announce that the remodeling of our Glen Burnie headquarters is progressing nicely, and we encourage you all to visit us once that project has been completed. The MVA and its partners remain committed to developing solutions to save lives on our roadways and to reach our goal of zero fatalities, and that is the only acceptable number. Last year, 42 people lost their lives in Anarundel County, and so far this year, there have been 38 fatalities. Earlier this month, Governor Moore announced $64,000 in highway safety grants to law enforcement agencies, including the Anarundel County Police Department to address speed, impairment, and aggressive driving, and the county's Office of Transportation to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety on our roads. Funding will also support the Streets Smart Campaign that raises awareness of safe behaviors on all roads, of all road users, to reduce pedestrian and bicyclist injuries and fatalities. I'd like to commend Anarundel County for implementing the highway safety plan. It is a complement to the state's plan while addressing the specific needs of this community. In closing, many of the MVA's accomplishments could not be possible without the hard work and dedication of the committed employees. As a team, the MVA continues to set an example and raise the benchmark on what it means to do business with a motor vehicle agency. Thanks for your attention, and I'll now turn it over to Ricky Smith at MAA.
Thank you, Leslie, and good evening, everyone. Members of the council, other elected officials, it's good to be here again. So the Maryland Aviation Administration propels economic activity and global connectivity for the state of Maryland. Our public-use airports across the state are economic engines that contribute to job creation, business development, and worldwide access. As the busiest airport in the region for passenger and cargo traffic, BWI Thurgood Marshall Airport is a key driver of this economic activity and global connectivity. A recent update to BWI's economic impact study reports that the airport produces an annual economic impact of $11.3 billion while generating, supporting, and sustaining more than 107,000 jobs throughout the region. Even as BWI Marshall serves as a vital economic catalyst that supports innovation and tourism, we recognize and prioritize our position as a good neighbor. Our position as a good neighbor is powered by our commitment to youth development, community engagement, military service, environmental compliance, and economic development. We have a longstanding comprehensive noise program that helps support our local communities, including a system with nearly 30 sophisticated noise monitors placed throughout the region. For decades, we have participated in the FAA's noise compatibility program, which provides sound insulation for eligible residents and schools to mitigate aircraft noise. To date, more than 700 local homeowners have participated. In our current phase of the program, 18 homes were recently treated, and construction is underway on another 20 homes. We will soon award a construction contract to improve more than 200 local multifamily units. For seven years, we have actively partnered with local residents and elected officials to create and support the DC Metroplex Community Roundtable, which has worked with the Federal Aviation Administration to recommend and create important modifications to airline flight paths. In recent weeks, the FAA implemented these new arrival and departure procedures for aircraft operating in and out of BWI Marshall Airport. The updated flight paths mark a significant milestone in the commitment to address noise concerns by local residents. These revised procedures were specifically designed to help reduce noise impacts for communities near the airport. This was a collaborative and very detailed effort. Our partners, government leaders, and residents served on the roundtable, including our Councilman Pete Smith, are to be commended for their commitment and hard work on this issue. As a service update, BWI Marshall has recovered and surpassed pre-pandemic passenger traffic. As Governor Moore recently announced, it was a record-setting summer for airline and passenger traffic, with an all-time monthly passenger record set in June and then promptly outdone in July. In our capital program, we're advancing important projects that will enhance BWI Marshall for our passengers and provide important facilities for our partners. Secretary Wiedfeld mentioned the AB Connector and Baggage Handling System Project, which is the largest capital improvement in our history. This major project will largely complete late next year. We look forward to the new enhancements for our customers and for Southwest Airlines. The MAA continues to support the 33 public-use airports that serve communities across the state. For the statewide aviation grants program, again, thanks to Secretary Wiedfeld, that provides important support, MAA intends to administer some $3.5 million in funding during fiscal year 2025 for regional airports across the country, across the state. This funding includes $897,000 to support storm water, stormwater management facility and terminal building construction at Tipton Airport. So again, thank you, and I will now hand it over to Jonathan with the Port of Baltimore.
Good evening. Thank you, and good evening to everybody. I am Jonathan Daniels, the Executive Director of the Maryland Port Administration. Pleased to be attending my first-ever CTP meeting, delighted to be a part of the Port of Baltimore, and now a proud Maryland resident. Talking a little bit about where we stand with cargo recovery, the Port of Baltimore continues to make progress in our recovery. Of course, while our numbers would have been higher, but for the elision and bridge collapse, our most recent cargo numbers from August showed year-over-year gains of 31% in handling cars and 28% for breakball cargoes. We're handling more than 90% of the ships that we were handling just a year ago, and have seen significant increase in the number of trucks coming into and out of the port. We're now averaging 3,300 trucks a day, which is 1,000 more than the daily rate of August and nearly back to our average of 3,500 per day pre-incident. Ports America Chesapeake is handling about 80% of the container volume it was handling a year ago, as we saw a strong second half of summer for containers. Within our cruise market, our cruise ships, the Carnival Pride and Royal Caribbean's Vision of the Seas, were able to restart operations on May 25 and once again sail at capacity to exciting locales like the Bahamas, Bermuda, the Caribbean, and New England and Canada. The Port of Baltimore has become a very popular cruise port, not only for Marylanders, but for people as far south as North Carolina, as far north as New York, and as far west as Michigan. We're also excited about our new in-transit port calls, which bring different brands to the Port of Baltimore. In November, we welcomed Ozymara Cruise Line, and in 2026, we'll welcome IATA cruises from Germany and high-end cruises like from Crystal Cruises. Each of these cruise lines brings different itineraries and experiences and further helps to build our cruise profile. We're also very excited about the future of the Port of Baltimore. One of the projects that will allow us the opportunity to meet our growth objectives is the Howard Street Tunnel Project. Working closely with CSX, this project will give us the ability to handle double-stack containers on rail, will be finished in 2026, and increase our business capacity by more than 160,000 containers, and will create more than 13,000 jobs. We're also embarking on a new 20-year strategic master vision plan that will grow our business and generate additional good-paying, family-supporting jobs. Our advantages, whether pre-incident or post-incident, have not changed. We're still the closest east coast port to the Midwest, providing cost savings for our customers. We are in a top-five national consumer market with more than 70% of our inbound containers consumed within 70 miles of the port. We have a very skilled and experienced International Longshoremen's Association labor force, and we are in an excellent e-commerce and distribution center port with many distribution, warehousing, and fulfillment facilities located in our region. The Port of Baltimore is Maryland's port. While we welcome these positive developments, we are, however, still assessing the damages and long-term impacts caused by the port shutdown and the loss of the Key Bridge. We have joined in the state's legal action that seeks to hold the Dolly's owner and management accountable for the state's damages. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you here tonight, and now I return it back to Secretary Wiedfeld.
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. That completes our presentation. I know it's a lot of information. Thank you for your patience, but as you can see, the department touches so many parts of the county and obviously the state in everything that we do, so be glad to take any questions or comments you have, or if you have a, if the county executive is doing his presentation next.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. I wanted to first, I overlooked an opportunity to recognize our department chair, our department head, Sam Snead. Sorry, sir. He's here. Important. I believe we were going to have the county executive make a statement, and then we will have an opportunity for council members to ask some questions, if that's okay? Mr. County Executive?
Would you like me to sit in the council?
No. We like to keep our branch of government separate.
Start out and just say, oh, okay. Thanks. Or would you rather have me down there?
Sure.
Facing you, okay. I'm comfortable here. I'm comfortable here, if you all want to stay here. And then I feel like I'm actually speaking to you as well as everybody else. So first of all, I want to say thank you like a thousand times, you, Secretary Widerfeld, and your team. It's just, it's kind of extraordinary hearing how much you do just in our county. Is this your last county? Are you, you, what, how many have you done? I had heard a rumor that we were number 24 this year, no?
No, you're not.
Well, too bad for you.
Twelve more.
But it really is extraordinary. I mean, I have the list of the things that we're always pushing with you, and it's a smaller list than the list that you come back and say that the things that you're actually doing. So thank you for all the things that we haven't even talked about as well. Here we have a slide. And I also want to recognize Sam Snead, the council chair already did, but he's doing an extraordinary job, really helping us do the small part of what you do. I mean, I can't say enough how important transportation is in general. It's what connects people. I will also say that I just got back from Sweden with some of your state peers, with Councilwoman Rodvien, with Sam Snead, and some of our staff as well. And you talk about complete streets, man. I mean, it's pretty extraordinary at rush hour when you're on a bicycle. And I will say that the reason that maybe we don't have the bicycle infrastructure is that I found that Americans aren't very good at riding bikes. We had a group of us that was in the way of everybody during rush hour, but we all survived. And it was really extraordinary to see what happens if a country continues to invest year after year in their own infrastructure, and then the population really uses transit number one, bicycles number two, and transit is buses, and it is ferries, and it is trams, and it is trains, and it is everywhere, and everybody uses it. So, and then the bicycles and pedestrians, and then cars are like the second-class citizens, where you get charged for going into the city, you get charged an arm and a leg to park, and you sit there and you wait for everybody else to go by before you're allowed to go. So I understand why people don't ride cars in Stockholm and Gothenburg where we were. So let me get to the next slide here, please, and I want to remind you, one of the things that makes Anarundel County a little bit different, we are, first of all, the crossroads of the state. A former county executive described the county of that. That was sort of his tagline. I say we're the best place for all. We're both, and that is one of the reasons why, I think, we have so many projects that you all love. I like to brag about where we, how many of our projects are in your top tier in your ranking system, and this time I can say that five of the top six in the state of Maryland are Anarundel County projects. So there was a time when I think we had one in the top 10, but I hope that means that we're in alignment with your priorities, and I hope that means that we're going to get more than our fair share of funding in Anarundel County in the coming years. The only thing that I think we missed in the slide projection, this slideshow, because it's so integrated into everything we do is safety, and I do want to just note one thing that we've done this year is we've started a speed camera program, we've got a contract, we're doing them, we're starting at schools, and it was largely driven, for me, it was driven by community groups who were saying that we have a problem, we need to get a camera installed in certain locations, we need a state authorization to do that. So thank you, our delegation, for doing that. And, you know, I hope that we're going to start to see some reductions in both pedestrian, you know, pedestrians being hit and other accidents as a result of that. So our priorities that we are going to talk about are transit, bicycle, and pedestrian, and roadway. There's a few extensions of that under transit. I want to thank you for the increase in lots of funding that we've got. Of course, it's not enough. I wish that the formula didn't just consider what you have operating, but what wonderful plans that you have that you're implementing. But I've got to say that, we can get to the next slide. Okay, well, these are the county priorities, the parole transit center, the lots funding being increased, of course. Transit-oriented development, where we have not only Odenton that most people think about, but we think of Cromwell as a site for transit-oriented development. We think of BWI as that, and we may even start thinking of Lowell as that when the racetrack goes away and we activate that space. We have a transportation operations facility that we're seeking funding for to create its inner capital budget that we desperately need, and we threw Chesapeake Bay Ferry in there because we just got a federal grant, we just heard about it a couple of weeks ago, to get our first ferries. We didn't get quite as much as we asked for, did we, Sam? But we may be, we sort of raised that up on our priority list, because now that the feasibility study has been done, we have a plan to do the first routes that will go Annapolis to Baltimore and Meta Peak State Park on the other side, and we really think that when that is fully funded, it is going to launch the rest of the ferry system for the Chesapeake Bay. So here's the slide I love. When you look at these lines, they're multicolored, but if you start at the bottom, that was 2020, and each one above that is a subsequent year going up to 2024. And I am really, really, really proud to say that we are, we have tripled our ridership in transit since pre-COVID. Most people are still trying to catch up what they had pre-COVID. We have tripled what we had then, and the reason for that is, one is it's free now, two is that we're marketing the heck out of it, and another is we finally have, we've entered the 21st century, and we have the really cool Passio Go app that tells you where they are, when they're coming, how long you're going to have to wait. And I was, I got to star in a TV ad about the app where I used it, and it worked. Wasn't really TV, it was internet, but I'm really excited about that. And so we have, as part of all of that, the Odenton Mark Garage, you know all about, it's number four in the state on your priority lists, and it is moving forward, and that is going to create transit-oriented development that we've been seeking for a very long time, and is going to make that Mark Station, which is the Odenton Mark Station, is our highest use station in the county, hopefully used even more. The parole transit center, we have moved the location from the Westfield Mall to the location that you're working with us on, at the, what's it called, the park-and-ride in Annapolis. So it's very close to where there's a lot of development going on, a lot of multifamily housing going on there, and we really think that that's going to make it possible to live in that area without a car. The Anarundel Mills Bus Shelter, we've also done bus shelters elsewhere, and we're enhancing our stops, and I think that's helping. The operations facility, we mentioned already, we have expanded routes, some we'd like to expand more, and we have a plan to do so. We have call-in ride zones, we started in South County, we're doing them up in Brooklyn Park now, and we see that as a wave of the future. And then, of course, fare-free transit has helped to grow the system. So let's jump to pedestrian and bicycle, and the priorities for funding are the ones that you see up here, the, we'll get to the trail network in a minute, sidewalks and shared-use paths, these are the ones that for bicycle and pedestrian are the most important. But then let's look at the cool map, and this is really been put together by Bicycle AAA largely, you guys. Mr. Corn here has helped put this together, and you can see on this, maybe it's easier if it's on paper, but where we almost are, we're almost connecting. When we get the South Shore Trail done, you'll be able to get from the major employment centers, Annapolis, out to Odenton and parts of West County. The BNA Trail is sort of our flagship that everybody uses all the time. The BWI Trail Spur Extension up north, we think is very important, and we're working on the design and implementation of that. I spent enough time with the Annapolis folks getting lobbied about the Naval Academy Bridge area to connect the BNA Trail down into Annapolis, so that's the one with the red circle around it, and that's going to be very important as well. And then another is, I really thought we were going to have our big event at the Patuxent WBNA Bridge that is sort of finally completed after all kinds of delays, but there's a little section of handrail that keeps you from falling off the bridge, and they didn't have enough of it, and so there's a gap, and we were told that we couldn't really do the big opening where I really wanted, while Angela Alsobrooks is still the county executive, I wanted to meet her in the middle. So hopefully that will happen very soon, and we'll be able, we'll be connected with the WBNA Trail and be able to, really, the whole country connected in a much better way across there. So, but we are deadly serious about completing all of this, and, you know, you've been great partners, but it's always slow, and it's going to be, it's going to be important when we get it done, and then we can make a new plan, right? We can grow the network when we get that done. So, and then we have pedestrian priority specifically on the next slide with these, and I think you're aware of all of them, all of them are important. I mean, it's one of the, one of the biggest complaints is, why does Anarundel County have sidewalks to nowhere? Why doesn't Anarundel, it was built that way, and we're playing catch-up, and we will be for a long time. So then finally, next, roadways. Even though we love multimodal transportation, we still drive cars, and we're still connected by roads, and we still have to maintain them, and we still have to deal with the worst traffic bottlenecks, and a lot of the worst traffic bottlenecks happen to be on state roads. So what we've done, I think you know, is, and maybe you're encouraging other counties to do this, I've heard that you are, is put some of our money in, even when it's your road, particularly on design to get things moving, and we did that in our first year with basically a permanent public improvements tax, 1/10 of 1% increase on the income tax, that created funds for schools and roads primarily. And that made it possible for us to pitch in with Route 3, Route 2. Route 3, which I will note, is number one on your priority list for the whole state of Maryland with a score of 1,376, and number two is about half that with a score of 614. You could probably explain that, but we'll take it, we'll take it. Number two, by the way, is the parole transit center. Pretty good. Number three is Maryland 170. I won't go through all of them, but number, Route 2 and Route 3 to us are related to I-97, and you mentioned that I-97 had 30% design and was on hold. We're going to talk to you more about that, and we might play that same game where we throw some money in and hope that you'll then continue. We'll see how that goes, but that's what I'm told, so we're looking at our budget and seeing what we can do on that. And the reason why it's so important, obviously, is that the traffic jumps from one to the other, goes from 3 to 97, 97 to 3, 2 the same way, and 97 is really, creates the backups on Route 50, and anybody who has to go to Annapolis and is part of the Maryland General Assembly, or a lobbyist, will tell you they really want that done, so we will lobby them too, to lobby you, and maybe it'll move up the list. So, and some of these others, these are priorities, they're, you're aware of them, our residents are aware of them, we will keep talking about them. And then other issues, it says here, the airport, airport, airport noise. We continue to fund the monitoring with Howard County, but we really do thank you for taking this seriously and actually implementing new flight paths. We need to go out and hear what, you know, what people in the neighborhoods are saying about, I don't know what you've heard, you've probably heard some things, but thank you for really taking it seriously and really making some changes. And I know that it's not totally under the airport's control by any means, because it's the next-gen flight paths that they do. So thank you for that. And finally, there's this weird picture that's up there of some guy and me kind of looking up, and the reason it's there, and what we're looking at, is people up on the train platform at the Odenton Mark Station, and we're just kind of cheering them on, and I'm cheering the, at that time, future governor on to make sure that he understood how important the Odenton Mark Station was, so that when he became governor, he would make sure that it happened. So I don't know if that's okay to put that up there, we didn't ask his permission, but I think it's a cool picture. So I will stop with that. I'm sure council members have questions and maybe some additional issues to raise, but I know it's hard, and for you all, you're constantly dealing with crises as well, and I kind of watch and observe, and I'm always impressed and really sympathetic. Thank you for everything that you did during the bridge collapse and after that for our residents, for our families that were impacted, and it was handled extraordinarily well, I thought, and let's hope we get some money from the owners of the dolly to pay for all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open it up to some questions for the council of the transportation folks, colleagues, any, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two things. Mr. Widerfeld, I appreciate your leadership. You do have a huge portfolio to deal with. Two things that I'm going to sort of ask, one is, and it is certainly my number-one priority when it comes to at least District 1, which I'll plug and say is the job center pretty much for the state of Maryland with, along with my colleague here from District 4 with Ford Meade and Maryland Live and the airport, and your MDOT facility in Hanover, the MVA, where she goes, she's in there somewhere. There she is right there, right across the street from my favorite place, Hip-Hop Chicken. I'm going to go ahead and plug that. Anyhow, there's a facility or a house on 175 and Wiggly. It is a family that has been living there for several years, and they have had at least six accidents where vehicles has come crashing through their yards. It was a project that we put, that I put in the budget here last year, at least to do this study on it. I am begging you to say and to have someone expedite whatever review needs to happen, because every time I drive past that house, I either see the mailbox taken out or the fence being hit. And so I had asked the county, on the county road, on the Wiggly piece of it, to maybe put a barrier or a buff, maybe a rail or something like that, but on the 175 portion of it, it's obviously a state, so you'll have folks interacting with, and maybe it's a more appropriate question for you, for state highway. But it is, I do, their kids don't even play in the yard, and rightfully so, because if you look at the data, the police has the data to show you as well, there's been dozens of incidents at that intersection, and all I'm trying to do, even if it's just one family, the government to say, hey, we recognize the peril of the situation that you're in, and we want to do something. Just a barrier, just that's it. If I could pay it out of my own money, I would. If I was rich like that, I would. But I'm hoping the Wiggly piece comes along here with our DPW. We had a conversation here a couple of weeks ago in reference to it, and then they're just working with the state on the state highway piece. I just do not want any of those family members to ever get injured because we couldn't put a fence or some barrier there. It is, it's every time I drive past them, I'm like, oh, there's another car through their yard, and it drives me insane that I, it's been years and we're not able to help them. That's the one thing. Did you want to respond?
Just comment, I got the head nods from our district engineer that we will take a look at that.
No, appreciate you. And then the last thing for Mr. Smith, the, there's been a bunch of noise, not airplane noise, but comments, I guess, about, and if you could just brief remarks on, there's an old outdated plot that had like a fourth runway, and there's remarks about people are concerned about whether or not some runway is going to be added on, and just wanted you to be able to provide that input to say, hey, you know, what is the status of that? To put people's minds at ease that no land is going to get balled up, and no, it's, yes, I'll just turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. So because of the expanded sensitivity around noise, people are sensitive about noise expanding, and there's been a lot of chatter around this idea of a new runway that's being planned. There's no runway being planned, no new runway being planned. We do have what's called, what we call a notional runway that is on our airport layout plan, which is the approved land use plan for the airport. That notional runway has been on the ALP for, I mean, twenty decades, for 30 years or so, right? And so they may see that, they may be paying attention to that for the first time and think that there's some new plan to develop a new runway. That's simply not the case, and, you know, we'll talk to any community neighborhood association to help clarify that, but there are no plans today for a new runway.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm sure.
Ms. Rodvien.
Thank you. So this is an actual, actually a shout-out to the District 5 office with respect to the traffic signal at Knollwood and Generals Highway. You've made a community very, very happy and feel much, much safer about their morning commute. Basically allows buses and parents driving kids to their neighborhood elementary school be able to get in and out of their neighborhood school much, much safer, and so I want you to know that those small things really do matter. So thank you, and I, special since Kim Tran is in the audience, wanted to give her a shout-out and make sure that she, that you heard that, her team's hard work. I also wanted to, I also was on this trip to Sweden with the county executive, and it really was eye-opening. I actually happened to be there this summer on I actually happened to be there this summer unrelated before I realized this trip was happening. So I spent a lot of time in Sweden looking at transportation. I was there visiting family or looking for fam, looking for ancestors, I guess. But one of the things that I learned is that their, um, traffic safety on highways is just incredible. Um, they have nearly, not quite double, but you know, their population is about 10 million, our state's about 6 million. Their traffic fatalities are less than half of what we have in the state of Maryland. And one of the things that they do is very, very aggressive speed enforcement and, um, you know, and, and traffic enforcement in general. And I realize that's, you know, not entirely, actually probably not really at all in your hands, but I think it's something that, um, that if we could advocate for, um, that, you know, that your department could advocate for, for our state legislators to really crack down on. We've seen some absolutely horrific traffic deaths. Um, and I, you know, we can, I don't need to name them, we can, we can think of them and we've had some locally as well. We've had some non-fatal, um, where, you know, it's miraculous that pedestrians survived. But, um, I think, you know, anything that we can do to increase, you know, we don't, as far as I know, we don't, Maryland doesn't have, um, speed cameras or tra, do we have speed cameras on any of the state, on any of the interstates or the highways?
We have them in work zone areas. Um, as you may recall, during the last legislative session, we were very aggressive with Lieutenant Governor in, in pursuing that. And this session, we will be expanding those efforts, uh, to much broader area.
Yeah, I think we can't go far enough because every single one of those traffic deaths is a family that's devastated and needlessly, um, you know, even where there are survivors. So I just, I couldn't, couldn't emphasize that. It was such a, it was so, it was really eye opening to see everyone driving the speed limit. And, you know, you almost, you go down a hill and feel like, okay, people are actually slowing down because they don't wanna, you know, they don't wanna go too fast. And so that mindset, if we could somehow figure out how to import that mindset, obviously so many things in transportation from, from Sweden to learn. But obviously, I, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing towards that, towards, you know, making, um, you know, electric vehicles possible, possible, um, building more transit, building more pedestrian and bicycle routes. Um, you know, we need that to, um, we need that for our safety, for our well-being and to the, for the sake of our planet. So thank you for all the efforts that you've got in that regard and know that I'm over here cheering you on.
Ms. Hammer.
Um, yes. So a couple of things that are funded in mind that I'm very thrilled about that are moving forward, the Odenton Mark Station, that's gonna be a wonderful addition. Long time coming, so looking forward to that. The other is our top priority for the county, that is the Route 3 with, and Watch Apple connection. I'm just gonna put in a plug for as much as we can do for that as quickly as possible because that is the main area that I have complaints about in my district is the traffic on Route 3. And it's, um, it's a challenging stretch because it was meant originally to be a rural road and it's now become a major highway thoroughfare. And so, um, that, most of it is in my district, but Councilwoman Ledbetter, um, has part of it as well and it goes into Prince George's County. So the whole stretch is a major thoroughfare for the county, for the state. And anything and everything that we can do for Route 3 would be much appreciated. Thank you for all y'all do.
Well, seeing no other lights from my colleagues, I know we have, uh, a representative from the Bike Commission and the Transportation Commission here to also make, uh, remarks? Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your microphone. Appreciate it. I think Mr. Smith, Pittman already stole my show, as some people would say, like it's a very good summary of everything that I wanted to say, so maybe it's gonna be even shorter. I try to keep it to two minutes. I'm Arian Van Handel, I'm the Chair of the Transportation Commission, I'm also a member of BRTC. First, I would like to thank MDOT, um, for your, um, re-allocation of the funds for the lots, because as I think it's very important for our county to have more focus on public transportation. It's very important to our county. And we're also very happy that many of the items that were priority for our county were, again, uh, priority for MDOT and the, and the funding that was taking place, was already explained a lot more by Mr. Pittman. There's a few items I would like to bring up where I have some concerns. Uh, one is the funding levels, uh, also for MTA, specifically the light rail system. I'm saying that, um, because that system is already beyond lifespan and cannot be kept alive if there is a shortage in funding. And I learned that there's about $350 million that is needed to keep the system running and to be able to replace the systems in a timely manner. And even though I'm not in Baltimore, I'm still mentioning this because a viable transportation system in Baltimore is necessary for our, our county, um, specifically in the area that is most in need for public transportation, which is Brooklyn Park. And, uh, Brooklyn Park, their jobs, healthcare, education are all connected to the light rail system, um, of Baltimore. And, um, we all know that public transport, um, if it's not available, um, in a, or in a limited manner, it will reduce jobs, health equity, will reduce in jobless rates to go up, crime will rise and more health, health issues will, uh, will come up. And you can also see this in a recent study from Johns Hopkins. If you need any more information, that's of course online, where the FDA outlined, uh, outlined the negative impact of lacking public transportation for public health. So I just wanna make that statement, how important public transport is, not just for the city of Baltimore, but for our entire region. I would also like to ask for clarification on that budget cut, which legal mandates and which requirements that we are to provide in public transport and in our regions are not being met by deferring more than $670 million over the next 600, over the next sorry, five, five years. I wanna also, um, bring up my, uh, gratitude still for the county administration who put public transport on the political agenda. Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Compared to many, to many years ago, public transport is now one of the main priorities of our county. And during the last few years, um, we were able to get more support in our county and we were almost providing two times more rides and two times more jobs, two times more healthcare compared to the pre-COVID times, more than 30,000 trips per day, as we saw on the beautiful graph earlier. On the national level, I would wanna highlight that maybe that doesn't sound very well, but most transit systems operated only like 70% of pre-COVID and we're doing two times. And it basically means if you invest in transit, people will come. And I think people will get out of their car if you invest, but if you don't invest, people won't use it. So thank you for, thank you again for all that support. Now for a region to be healthier and more attractive, I would like to request therefore to ensure that MTA system will be up and running at acceptable levels of transportation and to allow, allow the light rail system to stay alive. Because we would like to see the red line and the purple line in place connecting to the existing light rail, N-rail and bus systems. Lastly, there are many more topics I'd like to address, such as bike and pedestrian access to schools, public transport, healthcare, opportunities and jobs. I'll leave all those comments to, uh, John Corin here from the Bike Commission. Maybe one personal comment after what you mentioned here is, um, I'm also a father of a 16-year-old. He bikes on College Parkway. There's a lot of activities happening there. There's a project luckily happening, there's a bike trail coming up there. I would wanna ask if there's parts finished, is there a possibility to open that trail up for people to bike? My kid bike to school there every day. I'd love to have him biking on the trail and not on the, not on the road. That's maybe something just as a personal, no, that is, uh, more a personal matter, but I would like to see my kids side getting to school every day safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corin?
Thank you. Well, let the record show that my Dutch friend deferred the bicycle and pedestrian topic to me. Thank you, Arian. John Corin, Anarundel County Bicycle Advisory Commission. I, I want to also thank MDOT and also county staff. Uh, last year, I thanked you for the level of engagement, uh, can, the connection, the sense of shared mission that we have. It's, that's only grown in the past year, so thank you. Not the least of which is yesterday, we had two people from the Maryland Highway Safety Office at our Anarundel County Lifeline 100 bicycle event. So, uh, thank you for that. Thank you for all the embrace of multimodal transportation. I mean, that came through loud and clear in the, the collection of all your briefings and in the county briefing as well. So policy, plans, commitment are all there. Now, of course, to the asks, we have got to find a way collectively to streamline this process. This may be the first year that, that we don't complete any bike projects. May, hopefully we can get that bridge open by the end of the year. But the time that it takes to go from, uh, plan to design, to plan to study, to design, to construction, to a ribbon cutting and then maintenance, it's just too long. We don't realize the public benefit soon enough and time is money. The longer these projects take, the more expensive they get. So, um, we have just got to find a way. I know SHA undertook a study a couple of years ago related to the TAP grants, but we just have to find a way to compress, um, that time. I would all, also ask, and I think it's happening, while I know there's a lot of pressure on the size of the transportation pie, that we continue to allocate the pie disproportionately to the alternate modes, the transit, uh, biking and walking in order to affect mode share. That is the most effective way to address congestion. Adding lanes will bring more traffic. I think the answer to congestion on 2 and 3 is to fix the capacity on 97 and 50, all the, uh, controlled access roadways, so that through traffic never gets onto Route 2 and 3. When we add lanes there, it also makes crossing, uh, more treacherous for, uh, people on bike and on foot. And so that's the other ask, is the continued emphasis on crossings. I mean, you've done a lot of that, Will talked about a lot that's already been done, but oftentimes the, the state roads are, they're like walls for people traveling on bike and on foot. The, the regional crossings, and I've had good engagement with, with Bruce, uh, we, we'd love a bike pad lane across the New Chesapeake Bay span one day. The Potomac needs a safe crossing. The Susquehanna needs a safe crossing. We'd love one over the Patapsco. I know that's a long shot, but we at least have conversation about the possibility of a separated lane on a, on the Key Bridge replacement. And so we, you know, we're grateful for all of that engagement. So I'll leave it there. Thank you all and thank your teams.
Thank you, Secretary. Thank you to your team and thank you for the folks that are here to, um, engage in this important topic. At this time, we're, you can be dismissed.
Thank you so much.
We have a lot of work to do, um, in this area and I hope we'll all find the vertical leadership, uh, to get it done collectively. We're, the council's gonna, we're gonna take about a 10-minute recess. We'll let folks transition out of this meeting and come into the next meeting. We'll start the council meeting then at about 7:15. The October 7th, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We will now have our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Smith.
Please stand, uh, please rise. We ask that you pray in a manner that is consistent with your faith, as I pray in a manner that is consistent with mine. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed amongst all of us in this room and those who call Anarundel County home. Uh, we just want you to continue to, to pour into our hearts, uh, wisdom, uh, and discernment, uh, so that we continue to do what is your will. We ask that you, uh, that you, uh, continue to bless, uh, and, and bestow faith in those who were impacted by the storms, uh, throughout the country over the last couple of weeks and in the coming, uh, weeks that are to come, dear Lord. Uh, we ask that you continue to, to grant us wisdom on the council so that we can, uh, judge in a way that is fair to the citizens of this county, uh, and also to be a blessing to those who may not know that they are in line for a blessing. Uh, we ask that you continue to, to watch over us as we travel over the highways and the byways and, and all the families who wish they could be here tonight, uh, to let their voice be heard, but we want you to know that we hear your voice, uh, dear Father. And so with all these things, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412. Thank you. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in the audience, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please know individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly, two minutes, on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool? Yes, Madam Chair. We received two pieces that have been shared with the council, added to the record and posted to the website. Thank you. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. I have David Corrigan and Mr. Kurt Svenson. You may come forward. Did you sign up at invitation to audience or for a specific piece of legislation? I don't believe Mr. Corrigan is here. Mr. Svenson, go ahead.
Kurt Svenson, Arnold, Maryland. I was still working in the budget office when County Executive Pittman's first budget was being developed for fiscal year 2020. Not long before that, the then-chairman of the Citizen Planning Advisory Board requested an analysis of forgone impact fees, which I prepared and shared with the executive. He highlighted this in his first budget message and I quote, "The budget office showed me what we collected in the last 10 years. They compared it to what we were told was the true impact of development. The county council back in 2008, possibly influenced by the campaign contributions from the developers who pay those fees, set rates so low that we have since lost out on $127 million." Wow, unquote. He lambasted previous officials for lacking the courage to budget for the future and went on to say, "When you build new houses, somebody has to pay for the roads. That funding can come from the tax base or it can come from fees paid by the developers. Unfortunately, it came from neither." He used this to justify the dedication of an income tax increase to what's now known as the PPI Fund. But that one-time infusion of capital funds was just to make up for past sins. The promise to set development impact fees at appropriate levels, well, that never happened. Those forgone impact fees the executive railed against six years ago continue to accumulate under his watch. This is made worse every time you all approve a bill that outright exempts the requirement to pay development impact fees. But, but that's a subject for later tonight. Thank you.
Sir?
I'd like to address the council on what I consider antiquated and inadequate animal control laws. Right to the point, my neighbor has a dog. Our county animal control officers cannot make the owner of the dog stop it from howling and barking. The dog owner says it's an outside dog and he ain't gonna do it. Months can go by while he ignores request affidavits, court summons, all that could end in a $50 fine that could be ignored, only to put a lien on his house that he doesn't plan on selling or care about. It's a well-written law that clearly states pets are not allowed to disturb the peace, but has little consequences compared to the damage caused. If the owner of the dog was playing a dog barking recording or using a jackhammer and refused to make refused to make it stop, he would probably be arrested. None of your constituents should suffer in the same situation. I offer you a unique opportunity to see what it's like to be the victim of the laws you created. I'll give you my password to my door camera, and you can stream it live at 106 decibels, like it is at my house, all day and all night, without turning it off for months. And then... All day, all night.
Thank you, sir.
This one's at 3:00.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, it's, I still haven't been great. This is all day, all night. The animal control people have been out three or four times, and it's not gonna do anything about it. Do you guys have my email? I'll give you my password. It was, it's nice that the laws have been changed, but there's no consequences. All day, all night. It's what I'm going home to. If you want help rewriting the laws, give me a call, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes the folks that have signed up at invitation to audience. This is, I want to remind everyone here, this is an opportunity to speak on a subject not on the printed agenda. Is there anyone else who did not sign up in advance that wants to come forward at this time?
Good evening. I'm Kate Fox. I live in Davidsonville. Tonight, I want to talk to you about infrastructure. The Center for the Study of Local Issues at the Community College consistently finds in their surveys that residents of Anarundel County do not want any more growth and development. We also heard this from people attending the Three River Days events where Growth Action Network had a table. Finally, what we heard most frequently in testimony during the recent region plan approval process was the lack of adequate infrastructure to support increased density proposed in those plans. Yet, we understand the need for more housing in the county, especially workforce and affordable housing, and moderately priced housing. How do we balance these competing viewpoints? Perhaps better infrastructure. The mission statement of Growth Action Network includes "Ensure managed growth within a fully funded infrastructure to sustain a high quality of life for all." Our opinion is that the infrastructure in Anarundel County has not been fully funded or built, and that is having an impact on residents' quality of life. Tonight, I want to focus on roads throughout the county that are chronically congested. We believe that the adequate public facilities criteria for roads are inadequate. We need to change the A P F test for roads to one for transportation, following recommendations in the report the Office of Transportation released in October of last year. The recommendation to make the change to A P F for multimodal transportation provided rubrics for how this test could be conducted. Yet, nothing has been done about this recommendation. We also need to be able to pay for this new infrastructure. One way to do that is to raise impact fees. Thank you, Mr. Svensson. The impact fee study paid for the county, paid by the county, was released over a year ago. It indicated we need to increase impact fees significantly. The last time impact fees were raised was in 2008, 16 years ago. And the council didn't raise the fees for the full amount calculated by the committee that studied them, because the economy was poor and there was a housing crisis. No wonder our infrastructure is lacking behind development.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Sir?
Ma'am. My name is Jim Holman. I live off Meyer Station Road. I live adjacent to Two Rivers Development. Years ago, when the community was approved, it was stated that it was a big mess, and even today, it continues to be a big mess. The community itself is a beautiful community. Where we fall short is the infrastructure. Currently, the county has approved to widen Conway Road. This is supposed to solve all the traffic issues coming out of Two Rivers and our community. Unfortunately, we need a second way out. There's only one way in, one way out. Why did the county plan to expand one road, when it's one way in and one way out, and not provide a second entrance out onto 301, or even into Prince George's County? That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, okay. Good evening. I'm Gary Mahler from Jessup, Maryland. I wanted to talk about a friend that I was concerned about. I was the town commissioner for a couple of times down in Dewey Beach, Delaware, and so I know the importance of serving and the desire to do the right thing. And my friend Pete Smith held a town meeting in Jessup to discuss the Region 2 proposals, and there was one thing in there that people really were concerned about, me especially, was the idea of a mixed-use zone along 175 in Jessup. And now I'm seeing a bill potentially coming before the council that it would turn that area into potentially 44 houses on an acre and 14-story buildings, tear down historic buildings, an old Sears catalog house, and other buildings that people, some just moved into. And what concerns me is, you know, there's this concept of councilmatic courtesy, and I think, you know, I know Pete enjoys what he's doing. He's been doing a good job. He always answers the phone when I call him, and I'd hate to see the rest of you vote to put this mixed-use zoning and allow a bureaucrat to make that determination, because that's gonna hurt Pete's chances of getting reelected, and I think he's done a good job so far. So please, you know, little courtesy for another commissioner. I know Pete means well. Sometimes we don't disagree on everything, but we're still friends, right, Pete? So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. At this time, the invitation to audience is closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Seeing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Radvian, so moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of September 16, 2024.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 p.m. It was opened with invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter, and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 16, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Let theirs.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The minutes of September 16, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 7824, In ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Road Design. Bill Number 7924, In ordinance Concerning Personnel, Modification of Classification Plan, Positions in the Classified Service, Police Department. Bill Number 8024, In ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities, Charges and Assessments for Water and Wastewater, Affordable Dwelling Units. Bill Number 8124, In ordinance Concerning Zoning, Industrial Districts, Electric Vehicle Repair, Electric Vehicle Towing and Storage. Bill Number 8224, In ordinance Concerning Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, Retired Veterans.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 3924, Resolution Approving Anarundel County's 2024 Financial Assurance Plan for Compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase 1 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. Resolution Number 4024, Resolution Endorsing Financial Assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund to Ally Trading, Inc., Doing Business as Power Q.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3824.
Resolution Number 3824, Resolution Supporting the Passage and Enrollment of the Maryland Railway Safety Act.
Thank you. I've brought this resolution forward. Ms. Radvian?
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
I would like to be added as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummer.
Thank you. We were, the council, what?
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
I may already said I was gonna support the resolution, so just go ahead and add me as well.
Sure. Thank you, sir. The Maryland Railway Safety Act of 2024 is, has been before the General Assembly. It's been passed by the governor, I mean, it's been passed by the General Assembly, but has failed to make it across the finish line. The council has met with individuals actively seeking support of this state legislation. Madam Secretary, may I ask you just to read the resolution? I think that would be the easiest way to describe what this resolution is about.
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution Supporting the Passage and Enrollment of the Maryland Railway Safety Act. Whereas the safe operation of freight and passenger trains are vital to commerce, and Anarundel County Council supports efforts to keep train operations safe in the county of Anarundel and throughout the state. And whereas, in recent years, several catastrophic train wrecks have occurred across the country wreaking havoc on the communities in which they operated, many of those involving hazardous materials. And whereas, according to the Federal Railroad Administration statistics, there have been over 2,000 rail crossing accidents per year over the last decade, causing 8,494 injuries and 2,503 deaths. And whereas, the Maryland Railway Safety Act would address many of these unsafe conditions existing in the railroad industry today, and is vital to ensuring safe train operations. And whereas, the Maryland Railway Safety Act will prohibit railroads from blocking road crossings for extended periods of time. And whereas, the Maryland Railway Safety Act will limit the length of freight and work trains. And whereas, the Maryland Railway Safety Act allows designated collective bargaining representatives to monitor safety practices and operations. And whereas, the Maryland Railway Safety Act will require safe staffing levels for trains and light engines. And whereas, the Maryland Railway Safety Act will require the certification that safe, safety, excuse me, safety wayside detector systems are located and functional on railroad tracks. And whereas, the Maryland Railway Safety Act will require a reporting system for transportation of hazardous materials or waste accessible only to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the State's Emergency Management Agency, and the county and city emergency management agencies. And therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Anarundel County, Maryland, that it supports the passage and enrollment of the Maryland Railway Safety Act, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to County Executive Stuart Pittman, Maryland Governor Wes Moore, Maryland Senate President Bill Ferguson, Maryland House Speaker Adrienne A. Jones, Anarundel County Delegation Senate Chair Dawn D. Guile, and Anarundel Delegation House Chair Heather A. Bagnall.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, did you want to speak on behalf of the administration? I realize this would be a council resolution and therefore a statement of the council.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I would just want to say the administration does support this resolution. We've been supportive of this legislation at the state level for the past several years. Thank you.
Is there any comments of my colleagues at this time? I think I was moved to bring this resolution forward, as we've all seen in recent years, catastrophic train incidents across the country that do affect the locality where they occur, and it does affect local government severely. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 38-24. I do have one individual signed up in advance. We will have six, five other seats, so Mr. David Pendleton, you are welcome to come forward, and then anyone else who cares to speak on this resolution is welcome at this time as well. Mr. Pendleton, welcome to Anarundel County Chambers. You have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name is David Pendleton. I'm the Director of the Maryland Safety and Legislative Board for the Transportation Division of the International Association of Sheep Metal, Air Rail, and Transportation Workers, SMART. First, I want to say thank you for having me here this evening. I have had the opportunity to speak with each of you on the council, and so I will not rehash those same conversations that we have forward, recognizing that you have a pretty full slate ahead of you tonight. I just wanted to say thank you for your support, and for those who did not support, I still say thank you for taking the time to talk with me. It was a pleasure speaking with each of you. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and I now yield the floor back.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 38-24 at this time? The public hearing on Resolution 38-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 38-24.
Resolution Number 3824, Resolution Supporting the Passage and Enrollment of the Maryland Railway Safety Act.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 38-24. Ms. Fiedler.
Before I cast my vote, I just want to first thank Mr. Pendleton for a great meeting. I know you're new in your role, and you jumped on it, and were very proactive about this. For me tonight, and I shared this in our discussion, because the bill is kind of in a holding pattern, and I don't know where the bill will go when it comes to the next General Assembly, if there are gonna be any changes, I'm not in a position where I feel comfortable voting for it, so for that reason, I'm a nay.
Ms. Radvian?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Resolution Number 3824 has been adopted.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 66-24 as amended.
Bill Number 6624, In ordinance Concerning Approval of the Revised, Amended, and Restated Lease Between Anarundel County, Maryland and Wiley Bates School, LLC.
This is administration bill. Mr. Hunt, when your team is assembled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Daniels, the Director of our Office of Real Estate, and Laurie Blair Klossmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill has been heard several times over the past couple of months. We are revising the lease in order to allow Wiley Bates LLC to move forward with renovations at the Wiley Bates Senior Housing, and there was an amendment at the last meeting that the council adopted to address an insurance issue that the Office of Law worked out, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 66-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We do not have anyone signed up at this time. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill Number 66-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 6624 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 66-24.
Bill Number 6624, In ordinance Concerning Approval of the Revised, Amended, and Restated Lease Between Anarundel County, Maryland and Wiley Bates School, LLC.
Here's the last opportunity for any questions or comments to my colleagues. Seeing none? You're good? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 6624. Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6624 as amended has passed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 68-24.
Bill Number 6824, In ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, College Parkway Place, Annapolis, Maryland Amendment.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While the team is getting assembled here, Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration, I have Aaron Karpowitz and Kathy Ebner from Anarundel Community Development Services, Billy Penley and Brian Schenk from the Office of Finance, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So we discussed this bill at the previous work session, but this is an amendment to the pilot for College Parkway Place, which is a 170-unit affordable housing community serving both families and older adults in Arnold. Property has had an existing pilot since 2004. If you'll recall, this past spring, the council voted to extend the pilot for an additional 40 years and change the ownership name, because the property is being refinanced by the owner to undergo comprehensive rehabilitation. Property right now is still under the tax credit, I'm sorry, under the same ownership. However, when you use a tax credit financing, a new subsidiary of the ownership entity becomes necessary and becomes the property, owner of the property at closing. The current pilot agreement was executed prior to the anticipation of the election of the 2024 American Civil Rights Act. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of individuals who live in the United States, and it provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of individuals who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the rights of citizens who live in the United States. The 2024 American Civil Rights Act is a legislative act that provides for the protection of the The current pilot agreement was executed prior to the anticipated closing, however, there were some subsequent delays from the investor to meet that closing date by the end of fiscal year 2024, so the project did not close during that fiscal year and therefore did not revert to the new ownership, which left the project in a bit of limbo, where the old pilot was no longer, pilot agreement was no longer effective, but the new pilot could not be applied either, even though the property is still operating as an affordable housing development. This amendment will allow the pilot to be applied retroactively to taxes that were due for fiscal year 2025. The current pilot amount is $83,809, and we would like that applied to their fiscal year '25 taxes, which were already paid once the new ownership goes into place. The full tax amount is $215,280. This amendment would allow that to happen and allow for the pilot to continue on the property as was originally intended. We are happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Mike, of the, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we talked about this at the work session, I believe there was an anticipated closing date. Did that, all of that come to fruition, out of curiosity?
Well, so, thank you for that question, Councilwoman Fiedler. Erin Karpowitz, Anarundel Community Development Services. At the time, this bill, it didn't come to fruition, and that's why we're actually coming back with this amendment, but it did the week after the work session. So it has closed, and it's under the new ownership entity name, but again, it's still with Enterprise Community Development.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions from my colleagues, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 68-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak at this time on Bill Number 68-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 68-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 68-24.
Bill Number 68-24, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, College Parkway Place, Annapolis, Maryland Amendment.
Any final statements from the administration? I don't see any questions from my colleagues.
We would urge your favorable vote. Thank you.
I would also like to urge my colleagues for a unanimous vote. These pilot agreements are extremely important for the, both the creation and the preservation of affordable housing in Anarundel County. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 68-24. Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 68-24 has passed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 69-24.
Bill Number 69-24, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Villages at Marley Station, Glen Burnie, Maryland, Second Amendment.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the same group with me at the table. So Villages at Marley Station is a 757-unit affordable housing community in Glen Burnie. The property had an existing pilot subsidy, but the affordability period on the existing financing was set to run out in 2026. Property has been purchased by Fairfield, which is an affordable housing developer that plans to refinance the project, make renovations, and keep the property affordable for another 40 years. In anticipation of closing, the county updated the pilot agreement in 2022 to reflect the new ownership entity and continue the pilot payments at previous levels. However, since that time, there were major delays in finding a tax credit investor for this project, which is an historically large tax credit deal at $120 million. The delays caused the project costs to balloon due to escalating interest rates, construction costs, and carrying costs, which left a gap of approximately $48 million. The developer owner is filling a large portion of that gap by bringing additional equity to the table and deferring 100% of its developer fee. Meanwhile, the state of Maryland has come with an additional soft loan funding, and the county is recommending an increased pilot amount to help bridge some of this shortfall. This amendment reduces the pilot payment from $218,120 to $50,000. The proposed pilot amendment will reduce the pilot payment, allowing the developer to borrow more tax-exempt bond funds. The amendment also makes a technical change that aligns the property with Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development newer income averaging policy, which allows for income averaging of the units, so that they all average 60% of the area median income, with some being under that and a few being over that, up to 80% AMI. And it allows the developer to receive a partial pilot if any of the units are over 80% AMI, so that we do not have to displace any existing tenants. This amendment, along with the other financing that is coming together to close that gap, will make this 757-unit property to be preserved for its goes-to-market rate in 2026.
Thank you. I understand representatives from Fairfield are here tonight. I just want to thank them for coming. It's good to see you. This project is actually in District Two. It's a very important and one of our longest-standing affordable housing communities in Anarundel County. As you've heard, it's also one of the largest, which makes it very difficult to finance. It's an old property, and I'm looking forward to the enhancements and revitalization that Fairfield is bringing to the table. It also provides tremendous affordability between 30 and 80% average area median income, which, if you understand those calculations, it is a very, very difficult to find housing in this county or surrounding counties with incomes in those levels. And yet, that is the income of many of our essential workforce in this county. So I urge my colleagues' support. We tend to know how these votes go, but I do urge my colleagues' support at this time. Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment before we open the public hearing? Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up ahead of time providing online testimony?
No, Madam Chair, we did not have any.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill Number 69-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 69-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 69-24.
Bill Number 69-24, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Villages at Marley Station, Glen Burnie, Maryland, Second Amendment.
I don't see any comments from my colleagues. Mr. Hunt?
Oh. My apologies, Ms. Rodvian.
It's okay.
I just turned too fast.
It's okay.
You have the floor. So I'm fully intent to support this, this resolution, but I wanted to just hear, because I, I'm alarmed that we are getting nay votes on the pilot projects, and so I just wanted to hear from the panel on some of the consequences of what would happen to this property and the residents in this property if we did not pass this pilot renewal.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman Rodvian, Erin Karpowitz from ACDS. You know, if, this is a very complicated deal, and, and so the, the developer is kind of, you know, putting a lot on the line in terms of coming to the table with, let's see, 35 million in their own investment, and they're also going to defer 100% of their developer fee, and they're getting extra funding from Maryland DHCd. So the small amount, the pilot amount, while it's, it's an increase in the pilot that the county's providing, it's providing an extra $2 million to help kind of ward off that gap. And if, if this deal doesn't go through, it's supposed to settle in early December. Again, not knowing what the interest rates are, and they have other financing requirements that make it important that they settle by the end of the year. If it doesn't go through, again, it's supposed to, the tax credit deal expires, and so that means it's going to revert to market-rate housing, and we would lose 757 precious units. But, you know, it's just an important part of our, our rental stock.
May I ask a follow-up question?
You may.
So what would be, if the deal didn't go through and the units returned to market rate, what would be the possibilities for the current tenants of those 700-plus units?
Kathy Ebner, ACDS. So, once the affordability restrictions expire, essentially, the entire property, all 757 units, can go to full market rate. And what I would anticipate is that the owner would want to, whoever the owner would be, on my understanding, is Fairfield's intent would be to sell the property if they aren't able to refinance this and extend the affordability restrictions, and the new owner certainly would want to maximize their profits and would raise the rent to the maximum allowable rent that they could, you know, the market would bear. It's unknown what that, what that rent amount would be, but it certainly would be higher than the income restrictions that Fairfield is proposing to place on the property. So, to answer your question, I think what would happen is the residents would be unable to afford the new higher rents, and many of them would be found without a home.
So, just to be clear, a nay vote on this pilot jeopardizes the housing for the residents of 700-plus units. Presumably, they're not one individual per unit. There's probably, on average, two or three, so thousand or thousands of Anarundel County residents could jeopardize their housing if we do not pass this. Yet I have colleagues who are willing to vote nay, and I think the public needs to be very aware of what those nay votes mean as we take this vote, and I encourage them to reconsider that.
I don't, I have no other questions at this time. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would just urge the council to vote favorably on this bill.
I know there's a, a lot of, there's a lot of work involved in this, in this deal, and I know how I'm voting. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 69-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 69-24 has passed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 70-24.
Bill Number 70-24, An Ordnance Concerning Crimes, Civil Offenses, and Fines, Crimes, Miscellaneous Prohibited Act, Second Amendment.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some constituents contacted me and asked me to put this legislation in, so it is before you. They were concerned about people sleeping overnight in recreational vehicles on county roads, specifically using the, what's defined as recreational vehicle, which includes a camper, motorhome, travel trailer as a dwelling or residence while parked on a county road. So what this does, very simply, is says that you're not allowed to do that, and if you did do that, that would be a Class E civil vi, civil offense, which is the lowest level of civil offense. There's no incarceration component. It's a $50 fine. With that, I have spoken with the Police Department. They've weighed in on this, and I think the intention is to use this more as an educational tool, as opposed to a penalty for people, but it would criminalize, not criminalize, but it would prohibit, excuse me, something that is currently not prohibited, though probably disfavored. There are certainly safety concerns about having people use a recreational vehicle as a living quarter or living facility on a county road. So with that, I'd ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Captain Tim Schultz from the Police Department, and Laurie Blair Klossmeyer from the Office of Law to answer any questions.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes. Is it currently, is there a penalty for sleeping in your car in a, on a county road?
It's my knowledge. Not sleeping in your car.
Okay. So, but, so you could sleep in your car, but according to this, you couldn't sleep in your RV?
Sleeping in your car, there are other, if an officer were to come across or to get a call for a person sleeping in their car, there are other mitigating factors that an officer may look at as far as a vehicle that's attended, an officer still may be able to approach that vehicle, and so it certainly could still be a call for service. But I think this violation was looked at as a way to address someone overnighting in a vehicle for a long period of time, or even for, during certain hours, and the issues that may go along with that. As far as, you know, a vehicle doesn't have waste systems, it doesn't have electrical systems, it doesn't have other things that may cause for an extended stay, and other, other potential hazardous situations that people were concerned about. As far as also a car normally parked on a street, let's say we're in a congested area, such as areas, let's say Catherine Avenue, where we're talking about an area maybe north Brooklyn and that kind of thing, where the streets are closely packed together and we only maybe have one lane of travel, you're looking at potential for large fire trucks, ambulances, and other pieces of equipment that we find are vital to get through those areas, even snowplows and that kind of things. We would need those pieces of equipment to be able to get through there. So vehicles such as that are going to take up a lot more space, and I think that's another reason why we need officers to have the ability to have a reason to get out there and have a firm leg to stand on, either from a legal perspective or an intervention perspective, and not just a normal call for service, where then they don't have any standing once they arrive and want to identify who that person is, if that makes sense.
Let me ask another question.
Yes.
If, if a vehicle like that were impeding the roadway for emergency vehicles, you could cite that, even if there wasn't somebody staying it, for instance, if, if they're taking up so much room that there's not room for the emergency vehicles to get down the road?
You certainly could, but sometimes in those situations, you may have to allow that vehicle, to say it's a vehicle that's parked there. You're looking at a, potentially tagging that vehicle and having to wait a certain amount of time for that vehicle to move. And in this case, again, we talked about the educational components of this, about trying to have an officer have the ability to have that discussion, and by passing a violation such as this, the officer has a legal leg to stand on at that point, identify that person, and then offer that educational opportunity, or the ability to, to say, if you are unable to move this vehicle, then they can take enforcement action. And again, at the lowest possible level, if need be.
But that would only be if they were living in the, staying in the vehicle. So if it was just somebody was parking their RV on the street, y'all wouldn't be able to, I mean, I guess you could talk to them about moving it if it was impeding the road, but you wouldn't.
Correct. And that's why I think the, one of the things that, since our last workgroup session, I've given a lot of thought, and we've discussed it in, in our office, I work in our Traffic Safety Division, and one of the things that's most important about this is giving the officers an ability to, you know, the officer has to, when an officer arrives, they have to have a legal reason to be there, a reason under policy to be there, or a constitutional reason to have an accosting and talk to someone. And by having something like this, an officer actually has the ability to then have firm ground to stand on and say, this is why I'm here. I was here for a call for service, and now I'm actually engaging with you. And without having that ability and not having a law such as this, or a county ordinance, it, it leaves that officer sort of in a, in a position where, why are you here? So this is actually something very important, and in reference to every ordinance that we pass, that you're, you're giving those officials the ability, even Health Department or wherever, the, the ability to, to go out and take some sort of action, if, if need be, if the educational component doesn't work.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Oh.
Any other questions from my colleagues? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 70-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We did not have anyone sign up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience at this time who would like to speak on Bill Number 70-24? Ma'am, we're going to start here. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
I'll be very brief. I'm Carrie Alperitz-Bachell, 1936 Severn Grove Road. And my thought is that if the problem is about emergency vehicles, make a stronger law so that, so that parked vehicles can't impede emergency vehicles, rather than beating around the bush with a law like this, which sounds like it would hurt people who are trying to figure out how to make it one night.
Sir?
Yes, Mike? My name is Steve Miller. I live at 613 Samantha Court, Annapolis. We've actually had this situation in our neighborhood on several occasions, where someone has shown up with a large RV vehicle, whether it be towed or self-propelled. They have lived in that vehicle for an extended period of time. They have electrical cables. They have electrical cables across public sidewalks, as well as hoses that provide the water for the vehicle, making it for a tripping hazard, not to mention the very large presence on a public road, which has already been discussed, that provides obstruction for people trying to back out of the driveway, or for children that might be playing in the neighborhood and wander into the street. People have a place to go with their recreational vehicles besides the neighborhood to be able to live. And so I think this bill is really a good thing for homeowners associations, particularly ones that prohibit those kind of vehicles on lots, and also would prohibit them on their private roads within the neighborhood. That public road offers something to some of the residents that is not otherwise offered to other residents within the same neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
My name is Kathy Gosnell. I live at 1963 Marconi Circle, Annapolis, Maryland. My concern isn't so much, I'm also thinking that the person who lives in a recreational vehicle may be homeless. I, I knew that one of my friends had her house totally burned down, and that's what she had to live in. And you don't know exactly if the police, I don't, I understand what they're saying, but could they recommend a place that they could, you know, be safely be placed, that may be free? Because there are RV places, but they cost, and if you've lost everything, you can't afford that. So I just ask if they could, I understand their problem, but if there could be some solution, because you know how you have those rest stops and so forth, but in those rest stops, they tell you you cannot stay overnight.
Thank you. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 70-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 70-24.
Bill number 70-24, an ordinance concerning crimes, civil offenses and fines, crimes, miscellaneous prohibited act, second amendment.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I seem to remember during our work session on this bill, I don't want to name a specific big box store, because I don't want to get it wrong, but there are at least, there is at least one big box store that offers the ability to use their parking lot free of charge, improve safety because of the parking lot lights. So I just wanted to mention that.
The public hearing is closed. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Volkey? Okay.
It's Walmart.
Oh. Okay. Seeing no, no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 70-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill number 70-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 71-24.
Bill number 71-24, an ordinance concerning licenses and registrations, secondhand dealer license, secondhand sales.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This legislation came to me from one constituent in my district, and then a constituent in District Two. Not all secondhand stores are the same. These two particular stores deal primarily with children's clothing, and they share that since the bill passed in 2010 that added this section of the code to our county laws, that they have had to, or at least one has had to, hire additional staff to be able to meet the requirements of this section of the code, specifically uploading data on a daily basis. If they had been in compliance since the beginning of the code change in 2010, it would have cost them $120,000 to date, but the amount of any kind of stolen goods identified in that same timeframe has been very small. It has had an impact on their businesses, and they have asked for an exemption to the secondhand store dealer section of the code, and this only applies to those businesses dealing with children's clothing, who are trying to get out affordable clothing for children who grow pretty, pretty quickly.
The administration like to comment on Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. We're comfortable with this bill.
Are there any questions for my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 71-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We did not have anyone sign up in advance to speak on this bill. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill 71-24, you may come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number 71-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 71-24.
Bill number 71-24, an ordinance concerning licenses and registrations, secondhand dealer license, secondhand sales.
Last opportunity for questions. Do we want to wait for Mr. Volkey? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 71-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent from this vote. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, none in the negative, Bill number 71-24 has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 72-24.
Bill number 72-24, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation and budget, Public Works subdivision and development, zoning, housing attainability act of 2024.
Thank you. This bill, the Housing Attainability Act, Bill number 72-24, has multiple sponsors, including support from the county executive. I will read a statement and allow my colleagues to also speak, as well as the administration. For those that have been an observer of our council conversations over the last six years that I've served as a council member for District Two, you know that I've been a very passionate housing, passionate about housing policy and the need for housing reform of all types. I'm grateful for all the very hard work my colleagues, Councilwoman Rodvian and Councilwoman Hummer, put into this bill over the last eight to nine months. I also want to thank Councilman Smith for his cosponsorship and support. And finally, I want to thank the many people from the administration, the Office of Law, the Office of Planning and Zoning, ACDS, and as well as all stakeholders. We had a debate about MPD, standing up an MPDU program last fall, but this legislation, Bill 72-24, is a revised version of that bill, and I believe makes it more likely to succeed and reach our goals. We've come to this place through hard work, compromise, and many, many hours of grueling This legislation not only creates a long overdue moderately priced dwelling unit program, it also incorporates one of the main tenets of some of the concepts that we were talking about when we were first, in our first term in 2019, talking about an MPDU program, and that is the diversity of housing type, and the need to insert what we now call, the coined phrase, missing middle housing. This is an important component to affordability and attainability in Anarundel County and across the country. Examples are duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, some of which already exist in the county, but do not exist anymore in our county code. For those types that are not included in the county code, we can't build it if it's not allowed. So we worked very hard in talking about attainability and affordability over the last nine months, and how do we bring back that attainability of a starter home for our young professionals and young families, but also meet the needs of our aging baby boomers, who are needing to downsize potentially, which then also frees up a family home potentially in our community. Housing, this housing crisis is, runs deep into all income categories, in all zip codes, and this is a real, a really, really good opportunity to tackle not only an MPDU program providing a mandate of moderately priced dwelling units with, with new construction, but also the need for the diversity of housing types so lacking in our current inventory of housing. This legislation supports multiple policy strategies in the GDP Plan 2040, and recommendations in all of our region, region plans that reference increasing affordable housing and adding that diversity of housing types. Our county is highly attractive. We have a lot, we have a lot to offer, including a great robust job market, yet we have a low affordability score due to housing scarcity. This bill will allow us to use our remaining available land more efficiently, and providing a variety of dwelling types, we add options for the newly launched young, young folks, and the downsizing aging population, and everyone in between. I hope you'll agree with the notion that safe and sustainable housing for families should be the goal, and I ask for your support of this bill. I'll now turn it over to my colleagues, if they would like to make any statements about Bill 72-24. Ms., okay?
I will have more to say on this, but I will say this has been a, I'm going to say a labor of love by everybody who's involved, because we're all very committed to increasing both affordability and the inventory for housing across the county, and it was not easy, but it's something we were all committed to, to bring forward, and this is an important bill that comes through. I'm anxious to hear from the crowd tonight, but I'm also anxious to get this bill passed so that we can move forward in providing more housing throughout the county.
Would the administration like to make a statement at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, Eric Michelson, our Senior Policy, Senior Environmental Policy Advisor, Aaron Karpowitz from Anarundel Community Development Services, as well as Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, and I know Lori Blair Klossmeyer is in the audience as well. When we look back over the last several years, we have all done a lot of work to address housing affordability. We've adopted workforce housing, we've implemented some financial incentives, tax credits, dead city bonuses for workforce housing, we have a housing trust fund with a dedicated revenue source, we have fair housing legislation, workforce housing zoning pilots for affordable housing, including the two that were just adopted earlier tonight, housing trust fund, Councilmember Rodvian's accessory dwelling unit legislation, school adequate public facilities reform, as well as the region plan adoption and comprehensive rezoning that has been going on for the last year and will go on for the next two years. There is also state legislation this past session, the Housing, Governor Moore's Housing Expansion and Affordability Act, Housing and Community Development Financing Act, and Renters Rights and Stabilization Act, all intended to address housing affordability. And here we are with inclusionary zoning, with a countywide MPDU plan. And it's important to remember, MPDU's are one tool in the toolbox to address housing affordability across different levels of income, and this program is targeted at those at and just below the median income. Additionally, this legislation has always been intended to work in tandem with our proposed redevelopment legislation, which establishes redevelopment requirements applicable to critical economic, critical corridor, town center, and transit oriented overlay policy areas designated in Plan 20, in the Plan 2040 General Development Plan, in order to incentivize development in those areas and encourage redevelopment. And we will be bringing that legislation back in the very near future, once we have passed MPDU legislation. I do want to turn it over to Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, for some comments.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Jansen Evelyn, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. I have a statement that the county executive wanted me to read into the record, so if you would permit me an opportunity to do so, I'll quickly read it. The county executive writes as follows, "I look forward to hearing the testimony tonight of community residents and their leaders on this important bill. After Bill 7823 failed to pass last year, I pledged to come back with a new bill, but knew that to get it passed, we'd need the support of not just affordable housing developers, but also market rate developers." They told me that to offset the financial burden of moderately priced units, they needed legislative changes to achieve higher density. The county exec continues to write and says, "I want to thank Councilwoman Pickard for convening a work group to create those legislative changes, and Councilmembers Hummer and Rodvian for being a part of that group." While he is on the record of supporting legislation, I'm sorry, while I am the rec, while I am on the record of supporting legislation, I do have a concern. He continues to write that, "My understanding was that the change in how density is calculated, using the gross parcel acreage rather than the net after removing acreage, that is not developable due to sensitive environmental features, and the amendments to bulk regs were intended to facilitate more MPDU's. It was not until very recently that I was made aware that the bill is drafted in a way that they also apply to parcels exempt from the MPDU requirements, specifically developments with fewer than 10 homes. I've heard from a number of community leaders who are strong advocates for both affordable housing and environmental protection. The concern that the failure to link MPDU's to the benefits of the code changes could increase development potential and the value of land targeted by our green infrastructure master plan for preservation or parks. That, to me, is a legitimate question. Do we have enough guardrails in our existing laws to prevent that from happening? OPZ staff believes that we do in most cases, but it's not something that they've studied extensively. Development review is complex for each property. My own preference would be for this legislation to move forward with an amendment that ties the bulk rig changes and density calculation change to properties subject to the MPDU program. We would then follow up with a stakeholder group to consider changes to county development regulations to encourage missing middle housing in the subsequent bill. I am convinced that it can be done in a way that encourages creation of smaller, more sustainable, and more affordable units. Without an amendment ready for introduction, that approach would require the bill to be held for two weeks, giving council members and the administration some time to address other concerns that may be presented tonight. I would welcome that time, but understand that it's a council decision. If the council chooses to pass the bill as it is written tonight, I will sign it and immediately convene community stakeholders to make recommendations on how the bill can be improved in the eight months before it takes effect and thereafter. Our Office of Planning and Zoning and the staff in my office have built a level of engagement and trust in land use planning that has served us well in doing some hard things, both in housing and for the environment. But we have a lot more to do on these fronts to implement our smarter, greener, more equitable land use plan, Plan 2040. I know that council members will be listening attentively tonight, and I hope that our residents remember as they testify that we are all neighbors and are in this together. Whatever the outcome, we must and we will pass a program very soon to ensure that some of our housing is actually affordable for the essential workers we all rely on every day. That's it."
Are there any questions for the administration? Any comments of my colleagues at this time? I have a couple questions. Yeah. So I want to just, for the record, I think it's important that we, we get some things stated on the record. Does this bill, 72-24, does it in any way weaken forest conserva, our forest conservation law?
I can jump in, but I'm sure Eric can also follow up. No, it does not.
Yeah, Eric Michelson, Senior Environmental Policy Officer, it does not weaken the Forest Conservation Act.
Thank you. Would a project going forward, whether it was 1 to 9, 10 to 19, or 20 and above, would you be allowed to clear any more under this bill than you are currently today?
No.
In any of those categories, would you be allowed to weaken or reduce the amount of impervious surface that you are to mitigate for stormwater?
You would be able to increase the amount of impervious surface, but you would still have to mitigate all of that increase.
Thank you. I have a long list. We worked really hard on this bill. I want to make it clear that in that workgroup, for nine months, we brought with us, my three colleagues and I, core values. Core values in Anarundel County are environmental stewardship and investment in infrastructure. Does this bill in any way allow you to reduce or waive your adequate public facilities ordinances?
No, it does not.
Correct. Um... I think it's really important that, as we move forward tonight, it's always important to listen to our colleagues, our neighbors, the folks that are here tonight. But I do want to read, the governor of Maryland has been very focused on housing, housing affordability, housing attainability, and basic housing in the state of Maryland. And Secretary Jake Day has been a champion, along with others. And he wrote, we have a fantastic letter of support for the Housing Attainability Act of 2024 from Secretary Day, and I'm going to read a paragraph. Bear with me. "The Housing Attainability Act of 2024, Bill 72-24, represents a significant step forward for Anarundel County in alleviating some of the pressure of unaffordable housing on county residents. This inclusionary housing policy mixes changes in land use that opens the door for more development of middle housing with moderately priced dwelling unit, MPDU mandates, and incentives for larger projects. Moreover, the Housing Attainability Act of 2024 lessens the local barriers to market rate housing development, ensuring that the county is taking an 'all of the above' approach to addressing the housing crisis. Critically, and with the vast coastline of the Chesapeake Bay and natural resources of Anarundel County in mind, this legislation ensures that development is still done in environmentally protective manner, providing zero exemptions from existing environmental regulations. This bill is cognizant of our stewardship of Anarundel County's natural beauty and bold on serving the affordability and housing needs of her residents." Had to be said. If there's no other comments from my colleagues, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 7224. Madam Secretary, did we have any online testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair. We had 134 pieces that have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted on the website.
We do have individuals signed up in advance. I will call them up in groups of six. There will be time for folks who did not sign up but possibly want to speak after we get through this list of folks who signed up in advance. Mr. Matthew Johnston, Trudy McFall, Dr. Linda Bonner, Reverend Stephen Telet, and I can't count to six, Priscilla Cagna, and Kurt Svensson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the council, good to see you again. Matt Johnston, Executive Director of Arundel Rivers Federation, representing more than 3,800 individuals here in Anarundel County. Wanted to come here tonight to echo a lot of what County Executive Stuart Pittman said in that statement. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We have to deliver both affordable housing and protect our environment. And a good 80% or more of this bill does exactly that. Taylors very targeted policy levers, changes to the code towards very targeted moderately priced dwelling units. That makes a lot of sense. We know we have to have flexibility in the code, and we support that flexibility. But there were two pieces that Arundel Rivers pointed out and provided you all with amendments for today. We'd ask you to consider those amendments or vote to hold the bill. Those two pieces were mentioned in the county executive's statement. That is the net density and the impervious surface coverage that is foundational to all of our zones and has been that way for a long time in Article 18. Those are some of the strongest environmental protections because they define how much a landowner can do before you even get to the point where you have to ask for waivers to the law. And we believe that if you change the net density everywhere, especially on those acres that have floodplain, wetlands, and steep slopes, you will increase the likelihood of greenfield development. Now, if you want to do that and deliver MPDU's, that's flexible, that's targeted. But this bill does not do that. That net density is everywhere, all at once, regardless of where and how the development occurs. So, we ask you to consider those, and thank you again for all of your time putting together this great legislation. Thank you.
Ms. McFall?
What do I do? Move this? How do I do that? I'll move me. Good evening. Trudy McFall. I live at 205 Scott Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. And I'm here tonight to represent the Arundel Affordable Housing Coalition, of which I serve as chair. We have about 50 members who are both affordable housing developers, service providers, and just people who care a great deal about affordable housing, by which, just to clarify, I mean people who receive generally some kind of government assistance and serve households generally at 60% of median income and below. In other words, people who are somewhat lower income than the attainable housing bill is targeted at. So, we looked at this as a coalition primarily from the affordable housing perspective, since we're not market rate developers and much of this bill did not apply to us. And we certainly, as a board, were extremely enthusiastic and supporting of all of the effort that you have done. Really, this is altogether like an MPDU bill and a missing middle bill in terms of the housing types, and that's a monumental task. That created a monumentally complicated bill. And I spent a good portion of time on behalf of the coalition trying to sort out which part related to our constituency, the affordable housing, and which to the market rate people. And there are in there two things that apply to all of us, which I think are wonderful for both the market rate and the affordable, and that is the changes that allow you to get to the net density figure. That's terrific. That'll be a great help. And then also what I think we're still calling the missing middle, the variety of housing types, which I think will be great for affordable housing because we'll have more abilities to find a housing type that might be a little more acceptable in the neighborhood. So, we like both of those very much. I think with that, I will only say that the two developers, oh dear, I did want to make a little more points. Could I have another minute if I talk fast?
Thank you, Ms. McFall. Thank you.
No, I'm done?
We have a long night ahead. Thank you.
Oh, dear. You should have a clock.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Bonner?
Good evening. Thank you. Linda Hannafin-Bonner. I'm the co-chair of ACT's Attainable Housing Committee. And on behalf of ACT, we want to thank you very much, all council members, for bringing this important bill back and keeping your promise that you would do so. As you're aware, for over two years, ACT has been listening to the voices and stories of people's quest to own their own homes and to rent. We've documented the barriers and the challenges which link to the lack of an affordable supply in this county. There are also racial inequities in the zoning and permitting process that impact housing. And we also hear a lot of environmental concerns that are often disguised to prevent housing from being implemented. We give our full support to this bill and hope that you will pass this tonight. We need it now, and any more delays are just going to exacerbate the situation that currently exists. Furthermore, this policy is really critical if we want to implement effectively Plan 2040 and the housing goals that are in that plan. We recognize that this policy is not the sole answer, but we also know that it is not going to cause irreparable harm in the county. It's not going to have overclogging of streets and schools. Statistics from the county schools show that the school rates are declining in three to five years, and the Census Bureau also documents that birth rates are declining, as is average family sizes. We also have heard tonight and fully support that the county's rigid environmental forest conservation and critical area laws remain untouched, especially for those allocating water, sewer, and stormwater management. As a next step, we want to encourage the council to establish affordable housing goals within each of the regional plans.
Thank you.
Coming up.
Thank you. Dr. Bonner. Reverend Telet?
Good evening. Stephen Telet, Pastor Dazby-Broone, United Methodist Church, co-chair of Anarundel Connecting Together. I should not be here tonight. My mother, who is 100, had a fall a couple of hours ago, and I'm supposed to be at the hospital with her. But I heard that there might be some folks getting a little weak kneed, and so I thought it was important that I come tonight. You've worked real hard on this bill. The second is better than the first. No bill is perfect. That's why we can make other fixes as becomes evident, as becomes necessary. But this has been delayed long enough. Anarundel County is decades behind other jurisdictions as far as MPDU is concerned. And so, I think we should proceed. The letter that Council Chair Pickard read from the gentleman in the Housing Department, was that county or state housing?
State. Secretary Day.
Secretary of State Housing. And he has a clear understanding of this, not only from an Anarundel County perspective, but also from a state perspective, and affirms the excellence of this bill. And so, I'm here to support Bill 7224 and ask that there are no more delays. We have delayed enough. We've wasted enough time. And at this point, we just need to go forward, and whatever isn't perfect this go-round, we can improve it as we go along. That's what I came to say. I'm going to go see my mama.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
My name is Priscilla Cagna, AARP Volunteer Lead Advocate and resident of Anarundel County. AARP Maryland advocates for over 2 million Marylanders, including almost a quarter of a million in Anarundel County. We thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Bill 7224. The topic of affordable housing is being discussed throughout the state at all levels of government. I'm speaking to you today to emphasize the importance of expanding the availability of affordable housing. Zoning restrictions and the permitting processes currently in place are a major factor in limiting the availability of affordable housing. Across the United States, there's a mismatch between the available housing stock and what the market wants and needs. This is partly due to shifting demographics, such as rapidly aging population and shrinking household sizes, and partly due to the growing demand for walkable living. However, communities and builders are recognizing the need for a shift in the way American houses, homes are designed, regulated, and developed. So-called middle housing is a critical part of the solution. Such residences are described as missing because very few have been built since the early 40s, 1940s, due to regulatory constraints and shift to auto-related patterns of development and financing challenges. Bill 7224 promotes affordable housing. Inclusionary zoning ensures that a portion of new housing developments is set aside for affordable housing, making it possible for diverse income families to live in diverse neighborhoods. It promotes economic diversity by integrating affordable units into market rate developments. Inclusionary zoning helps prevent economic segregation and promotes a more inclusive community access to opportunities.
Thank you very much. That was a long two minutes, actually. Mr. Svensson, you got a lot said.
I did, but it's all. Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. As a former Assistant Budget Officer, I bring a fiscal perspective to this table. I wholeheartedly support this bill, but I do have two concerns, both of which I think are easy to address. First, where's the fiscal note? I don't see it posted online. Second, it's a short-sighted and unnecessary to exempt partially earned whole impact fees or capital facility connection charges in the manner proposed in this bill. I understand and support the idea of providing an incentive to developers by not requiring that they pay these fees. But that does not make disappear the fact that these developments place stress and demand on public infrastructure. Dedicated funding sources are critical to that. We have a housing trust fund. It seems to me that it would be appropriate policy and practice to charge the housing trust fund for the waived fee amounts and deposit those funds in the Development Impact Fee Fund. These impact fees and capital connection fees are engineered and defensible. They are part of the true cost of such developments. Therefore, the use of the housing trust fund for this purpose would be right and appropriate. Don't get me wrong, I wholeheartedly support this bill. I just think it can be done in a way that doesn't turn a blind eye to the true costs from a public infrastructure standpoint of these much-needed housing development projects. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. My next six are Adriana Kidder, Melanie Hartwick-Davis, Sarah Niebel, Matthew Pimpkin, Abby Root, and Stephen Waddy. State your name and address. For the record, you have two minutes.
Ariana Kidder. I live in Harwood, Maryland. I am also a full-time employee of Anarundel County, and I currently live in a four-generation household and recognize that with the support of my family, that is the only way that I am able to afford to live within commuting distance of my workplace within Anarundel You know, it's been a while since I had looked at markets. I did look recently again because I am in a comfortable place with family. But with what I could find through quick resources, through realty websites, and even Facebook Marketplace, what I was finding was even studio apartments would take up an entire paycheck for me. And I recognize that being a full-time employee comes benefits that I would not receive through other fields or working for other companies or anything like that. But I still cannot, with those benefits, I still cannot afford to live independently should I need to within the county. I also want to say, having worked in the natural resources field, I'm sensitive to the fact as well that we do need to balance, like how important it is to balance out protecting our natural resources while we also can support our residents. And I know within my department as well, we need to encourage people my age and younger to be able to start their career paths within county services.
Melanie Hartwick-Davis?
Thank you, Chair, Council. Melanie Hartwick-Davis, Edgewater, Maryland. I am here actually as vice chair of the Planning Advisory Board. Our Chair, Gus Kurtz, could not make it, so I signed up to be an individual, but I'm here representing the Planning Advisory Board. Thank you. I'm going to read so I can make my two minutes. "I'm intricately aware of our need for affordable housing, both in my personal life and my architectural practice. I applaud your dedication to this issue. In fact, I believe this bill should go further in the percentage of MPDU's should be provided. That said, leaving out key stakeholders in the process of creating 7224 has resulted in consequences. This bill completely disregards countless volunteer hours by citizens who worked to create Plan 2040, as well as the SACs and the PAB, members who are in the midst of extensive review to ensure that constituents are heard, that the region plans and the zoning map reflect their voices. As a member of Plan 2040 and the vice chair of the PAB, I feel it is remarkable to have a bill created without our representation that potentially upzones indiscriminately across the county. This bill will result in increased lock coverage for parcels that contain environmentally sensitive features. The most recent tragedies of Hurricane Helene are a stark reminder that now is not the time to allow increased lock coverage, mitigated so or not. We must protect our ecosystem services so that they will protect our citizens. In addition, the new language regarding open and recreational areas will result in residents having even less of these critical spaces available to them, further hampering our efforts to invest in environmental justice and make progress on that front. Overall, this bill incentivizes sprawl while sacrificing recreation and open space with no guarantee that the much-needed MPDU's will indeed be created. I respectfully ask that we work together to quickly develop a stronger, comprehensive bill for a stronger Anarundel County." Thank you.
Sarah Niebel?
Hello. Thank you, members of the council, for allowing me to speak. So, my name is Sarah Niebel. I'm the Executive Director of Sinequa Rivers Land Trust, and our mission is to preserve the forest farms and wetlands that sustain this county. the forests, farms, and wetlands that sustain this county. And thank you so much for your work on this. And I also echo County Executive Pittman's statements on there may need to be tweaks, but I also don't want to slow this down, but I do think there needs to be some amendments. We fully support moderately priced and affordable housing in this county, but we also are concerned to have it in the right places. So we, these increases in allowances of density and surface area could incentivize development in green spaces in the county. And these incentives for green development make it much harder to conserve these environmentally and socially vital portions of the county. As density allowances increase, so does the price of land. And the price of conserving those lands is incredibly expensive to conserve land in this county. I mean, we have an affordable housing bill for a reason. And increasing density like this will make it much harder for Sink Rivers, the county, and the state to conserve the forests and wetlands that sustain this county because of our financial resources won't go so far. These code changes are sweeping across the entire county inadvertently encouraging development in the wrong places. Increased density should be specific to where we want higher density and where we want vibrant economic cores. So amendments proposed by the Anarod Rivers Federation are a good starting point for protecting our green spaces, focusing development in the right places, and creating more MPDU's. Thank you.
Mr. Matthew Pippkin?
Good evening, members of the Anarod County Council. My name is Matt Pippkin of Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here representing the Maryland Multi-Housing Association. We house over half a million Marylanders across the state of Maryland, with 30,000 rental units in Anarod County alone. Like what Ms. Melanie Hartwick Davis said, as a stakeholder, we wish we were a part of the conversation. Maybe we could have gone ahead of this. But while we're favorable, we do ask for certain amendments, specifically in the implementation of the MPDU's once they become online. I will cite on page 18, lines 43 to 44. By how we read that rule, the MPDU's need to be specifically mentioned within the initial agreement. That does not allow us to be flexible, to be able to renovate the MPDU's, to be able to move common flows. It's gonna be disruptive to day-to-day operations, and quite frankly, you're gonna have less MPDU's online as a result of that. So something to consider. Additionally, with the administrator being in control of the waiting list and providing the MPDU applicants to the housing provider, the issue becomes, from our point of view, if they are not coming to us in a deliberate and forward manner, the housing provider is stuck paying for the now empty vacant unit, and we would suffer a consequence. So we'd ask for an amendment similar to Howard County that would allow, after a certain period, for us to give it to the general market. Additionally, throughout the legislation, while it's the premise of the program that the administrator would be the ones in charge of issuing the eligibility of people who can enter into the program, there are many times where, page 20, line 54, page 21, line 6, where the responsibility seems to go back on the housing provider to double-check, frankly, the administrator's work on whether or not they actually apply for that program. You had my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby Root?
My name is Abby Root, 1336 Chickaway, Odenton, representing the League of Women Voters of Anarod County. The League supports Bill 7224. Housing, a basic human need, is the single largest expenditure in most family budgets. The League's support of Bill 7224 is based on its affordable housing and planning and zoning positions to promote and pursue balanced development that will have maximum long-term benefit to employment and the tax base, including provision of opportunity for affordable housing by increasing housing opportunities for people of low or moderate income. Much of the public sector workforce in Anarod County, including healthcare workers, first responders, and teachers, in the early years of their careers often commute to work from other counties where housing costs are lower. The choice between high housing costs and long commutes is often a contributing factor to high turnover in the workforce. If these workers are able to afford to live in the county, they will become an integral part of the community, spending their wages here. They will go to local healthcare providers, the children attend school here, participate in sports, and other after-school activities. It will be easier for the parents to attend these events. Moderately placed dwelling units have worked well in other jurisdictions by providing low or moderate-income county workers access to quality housing at a cost that is affordable, as well as encouraging economic and racial integration. The League urges the Council to vote in favor of Bill 7224. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Waddy?
Thank you so much. My name is Stephen Waddy. I'm here on behalf of the NAACP. This bill is a positive step forward in the creation of much-needed opportunities for affordability in Anarod County. NAACP County supports Bill 7224 with amendments. This bill is specifically targeted to moderate-income families. However, it does have, does not have any race-conscious components, which could help alleviate the racial wealth gap in Anarod County. We've heard a lot about environmentalism. We also need to include proximity to whiteness in our analysis around this housing bill. It may also exacerbate existing race- and income-based disparities that affect the health, wealth, and knowledge of Black families across the county. NAACP supports, including amendments to this bill that one will allow the administrator of the MPDU program to add points on applications for buyers that happen to be Black and have been a resident of Anarod County in one of the, in the ZIP code, in one of the following ZIP codes listed in the Health Equity and Racial Justice Chart on our written testimony. It's a chart that was given to you all by the county's Department of Minority Health when you all sat as the Department of Public Health prior to the previous MPDU bill hearing. So the second one, we have an amendment addressing Black displacement should also be a consideration for this bill. Annapolis, for example, has lost close to 10,000 Black residents between 2010 and 2020 due to the housing unaffordability. And the NAACP also believes that this bill could reach the occupations. Most Black people in the Baltimore metro region are employed in, like warehousing, transportation, nursing, and home care, pararett educators, custodians, and cashiers, if it's specifically targeting them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for meeting with us. Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I have four remaining names of folks who signed up in advance. BK Holten Dorf, Christina Corona, Stephen Miller, and John Flood.
Get this lights on. Does that mean it's me? I'm the winner?
It can be.
Is that what it means?
I just say, I have, are you BK Holten Dorf?
I am.
Then you have the floor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for allowing us to speak. I think this bill is doing great things. I just finished a year tenure serving on the District 9 Stakeholder Advisory Group, which basically is predominantly Southern Anarod County, from Mayo Road, Mayo Peninsula, Galesville, Shadyside, Deal, Fairhaven, down to North Beach. So we've got the shoreline and the rural area from Route 2 east, if that helps you. And I learned a lot about the visions in 2040, being new to this group and excited about joining. And I will tell you that the guy, the team from Long-Term Planning just drove home every single day, "Think about housing, think about housing." And I assumed, I did not know, that we couldn't build multiple-family unit housing in Anarod County. We assumed you could. We assumed any kind of housing could be built. But let's figure out where to put it in our district. Unfortunately, we don't have much high ground left down there. So, you know, areas that are targeted for sea-level rise are not exactly where we want to put your multifamily housing. But I think that all the other districts are thinking about it too, because they're being driven to do so by the long-term planning people. So all I would say is, let's let those communities take a look at their area and the kind of ground that they've got to work with, and come up with some really good ideas for some innovative, cost-effective housing that maybe is using some different ways of building that we haven't thought of before, but provide it, have it provide all the things that people want: affordable, nice, comfortable, close to services, close to education, you know, able to commute to their jobs, places and parks for their kids. And then I think we're gonna have a win for Anarod County. But let's put it in the right place.
Christina Corona?
Good evening. My name is Christina Corona. I'm the President of the Teachers Association of Anarod County, speaking in favor of the Housing Attainability Act, which our union voted to endorse in September. This affordable housing legislation is a way for ACPS to recruit and retain more educators. Currently, the starting salary for a new educator is just under $60,000. While the district has made gains, we continue to struggle to fully staff our schools. As of last Wednesday, there were 52 classroom teacher vacancies. In fact, our goal is not just to fill these vacancies, but hire even more teachers so we can lower class sizes. We also need to recruit more school counselors, special educators, and related service providers who are also struggling with rising caseloads. This is why we must make Anarod County a place where educators both want to work, but also a place where they can afford to live. In addition to the UNO1 educators that I represent, our education support professionals, our ESPs, who include custodians, food service workers, teaching assistants, and school nurses, also deserve to live where they work. ACPS struggles to retain these critical school personnel who ensure we have a safe, welcoming, and well-run school system because they are woefully underpaid. They too need to see their paychecks go up while also having access to more affordable housing options in this county. The lack of affordable housing also negatively impacts our students' academic achievement. Due to rising housing costs, our students' families often must resort to cutting other expenses, which can lead to food insecurity and less money for necessities. Unfortunately, despite their family's best efforts, students can still end up in transient housing situations. However, we know the best educational outcomes are the product of learning communities in which both students and educators are able to show up as their best selves without external pressures weighing on them. We also know that when educators live in the same communities as the students they serve, they are able to create strong bonds. Not only does this improve student achievement, the more connected educators are to their local school communities, the less likely they are to transfer to neighboring districts. I urge you to pass this housing bill to improve the well-being of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Miller?
Good evening again, Council members. I'm Steve Miller. I live at 613 Samantha Court, Annapolis. First, I'd like to offer my support to what Matt Johnston said earlier and to the amendments that he proposed. This bill talks about active recreation. Cluster development allowed almost unbridled flexibility in lot design that created some single-family communities with postage-stamped-sized properties, leaving no room for active recreation. Then the minimal requirement for active recreation space in cluster developments was frequently modified or waived in the development approval process, ultimately impacting the quality of life for all residents. Now, instead of fixing this problem, the bill would reduce active recreation space requirements even more, by 30%, just so another dwelling or two could be squeezed in. Preserving active recreation space in these densely developed, densely constructed developments is essential. Furthermore, open areas where forest is preserved, and while legislation was enacted not too long ago by the Council to provide greater protection of forest from development, the recent Forest Dashboard released by the Bureau of Watershed Protection Restoration does not yet convincingly show a substantial degree of change. The planting of trees after the forest been removed is not forest preservation. Reducing open area will predictably lead to more modification requests to maximize housing density, at the expense of perhaps leaving less forest, altering stormwater management requirements, reducing buffers and maintenance pathways, leaving out portions of sidewalks and medians for road trees, and so on. This needs to be corrected. It is also not clear whether the moderately priced units will have an impact on homeowners' association, with the possibility of certain exemptions or modifications to HOA fees and rules given to their owners. To prevent having the possibility of second-class citizens in a community, everybody needs to follow the same rules.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. John Flood?
First, let me say that I've been a landowner and landlord in Anarod County for almost 50 years. I've provided quality, low-income housing in Edgewater, Maryland, to single working parents, county employees, state employees, many of whom have graduated into single-family dwellings. I know the problem. There were 50,000 people in this county when I was born. We know we're over 600,000. I read in the Capitol that this bill is attempting to create a balance between affordable housing and protection of our local waters. I've lived and worked on the waters of our county my whole life, and I'm here to suggest that we can do both. I remember when the bay was healthy and productive, and I remember when it changed. We didn't know the cause then, but we do now. Our land was once a sponge that let rain go to groundwater. Our creeks and rivers ran on springs fed by this groundwater. That's where our water quality came from. Then we brought runoff. We cleared land for crops, filled wetlands, paved and developed. In a few hundred years, we've made the sponge into a gutter. Now rain can't enter the ground. It runs to the storm drain, through the outfall pipe, down the hill, then the valley, and carves its way to the tideline. The springs don't run because there's not enough rain making its way into the ground anymore. For 50 years, we have promised that we would restore our waters and fisheries through public policy, much of which originated in this county. We have only succeeded in slowing the decline. Now we think we must try and strike a balance. Our forests, steep slope buffers, floodplains, and wetlands are the last line of defense for the water quality that remains. Mr. Michelson tells us that there will be mitigation for the loss of forest cover, but we'll lose forest cover, that we will mitigate stormwater, but there will still be more runoff. Rather than sprawl further into these areas, putting recovery even further out of reach, why not look where the sprawl began and redevelop there? Where abandoned shopping centers with acres of pavement can be transformed into high-density housing. We can protect and improve-
Thank you, sir.
-and provide more housing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. At this time, we have concluded the folks that have signed up in advance. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak, you have two minutes. You may, there are six seats. Sir? State your name and address. For the record, you have two minutes.
I'm out of Meyer Station Road. The gentleman that just spoke brought up a very interesting concern, and that was by reducing forest trees and putting in pervious surfaces, we allow for an unsustainable amount of stormwater runoff. We currently have a development in our area, and I know you're probably tired of me talking about it, but this development consisted over 1,400 acres of land. Now, there are almost 2,060 houses, sidewalks, asphalt roads, rooftops, patios. The stormwater runoff affected my property, multiple other properties. There was a stream bed that was affected. The estimated cost to repair it, and this is on private property, was $86,000. Lost my train of thought. With the stormwater management, the county denied all plausibility. The developer denied. The developer put it on the county, saying the county approved our stormwater management plan. The county said, hey, the developer gave us the plan, so we went ahead and supported it. The county should look at their stormwater management plan and grossly modify it to support sustainable housing. Quick change of subject. People talk about affordability on housing. Is it the actual structure and cost of the housing that we're looking at, or is it the financial aspect as well? Automobiles went from two-years, three-years, four-years, to seven-year, to 10-year notes because the cost of automobiles got more expensive. 10-year notes because the cost of automobiles got more expensive. Why haven't we gone 30, 40, 50, 60-year mortgages?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Sir?
Tim Stern. I'm the pastor of Arkanduff Presbyterian Church in Odenton, Maryland. I live at 1115 General's Highway in Crownesville. Those that have aggressively defended, those that have not are left behind. Justice delayed is justice denied. Pass now, amend later. Thank you.
Mr. Minahan?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. Matt Minahan, chair of the Growth Action Network. The Growth Action Network joins the many voices you've heard this evening and by email, asking you to defer your vote on this bill by two weeks, not justice denied by two weeks. We agree that the county needs more housing. We agree the county has a desperate need for more affordable housing. We don't believe this bill gets us near enough to that goal. We deeply appreciate the briefing on the bill that you provided, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair. We left the meeting energized by the escalation clause requiring more MPDUs for more density. However, it was only upon further reading, we realized that, under the guise of housing attainability, to increase MPDUs, 7224 actually changes the entire housing code that applies throughout the county to all developments with or without affordable housing. And so it grants more density to lots with steep slopes, wetlands, and floodplains, even where there's no MPDUs. It reduces by 300% the amount of open area in developments, even where there are no MPDUs. It increases the allowed amount of impervious surfaces, in some cases doubling it even where there are no MPDUs. It does not focus development around employment centers or where there is already transit, which adds to the sprawl in automobile-based traffic, of which there's already too much. It seems to encourage building everywhere, rather than the targeted areas, which contradicts the policy goals outlined in Plan 2040 and the Green Infrastructure Master Plan, or the work of the six SACs which have already considered land use in two-thirds of the county. It creates nine market-priced houses for sale for just one MPDU. 10% is too high a price to pay for too little yield. If we want to do MPDUs, it should be 50% to warrant the givebacks that are included in this bill. Thank you for your attention.
Sir?
Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm Thorne L. Jones, chairman of World Class Grad, member of the Caucus of African-American Leaders, and a proud member of ACT. I live in Arnoldts. Past housing policy has produced an income and racial segregated community in Anaronda County. This bill moves in the right direction. To bring people together and implement it properly, it will improve school integration, and hence outcomes. I hope these facilities will increase pre-birth to five living situations, so children are more prepared for kindergarten. Situation that we have with housing today impedes that greatly. I believe that moving in this direction, if we connect housing, this kind of housing, so that we have an integrated transportation system that allows people to get to work, allows children to get to school better without 1,000 cars on the road, we'll have a much better community in the future. Fact is, Anaronda can't grow without that. So this housing is an important element in that. So your hard work on this bill is very important. I thank you for it, and I want to ask you to keep moving forward to a systematic, sustainable process for a friendly community.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Thank you. Deborah Gundry, Parkside Preserve. I am a proud Annapolis City MPDU owner who happens to be disabled and works full-time, and I am in support of Bill 7224. I read the entire bill, and I would like to thank the council members who came together to study the issue and have come up with a way to help those who make too much for the housing subsidy but would not be able to obtain a mortgage because they would be spending over 50% of their income and would not be approved, or, in fact, some still have to get cosigned on their rental agreements. Some might wonder why I still take my spare time to go to meetings about this bill, email about the issue, and speak in front of you. And it's because several years ago at church, I once heard a sermon when the pastor talked about the importance of reaching out to get a leg up, but to not forget to hold out your other hand behind you to bring others along. When this bill passes, and I hope it does tonight, I will be so excited to tell my hard-working, the hard-working parents of my clients that there is an option available to them, and frankly, many of my colleagues who also hold a master's degree and professional license, please consider, please, please consider passing this bill tonight, not in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to come forward at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience? Oh, okay, come on. State your name and address for the record. You've got two minutes.
Ms. Gary Mahler from Jessup, Maryland. I also read the bill today, and I was very disappointed. And I can't say anything more or better than I think what the PAB representative Melanie Hart Davis said. I agree with that 100%. I think the PAB needs to be allowed to do their charter job and review these types of bills before they come to the council, like other councils, other counties in the state. Sarah Kiebel from the Rivers was right on. Stuart Pittman was right on. Steve Miller was, I mean, he took the words out of my mouth. This is one thing to, what I see here is this bill is about financing. Who's going to pay for what? You're not producing, with the numbers that we're seeing, you're not going to make a, it's like a drop of water in a bucket. You're not giving enough housing for the middle price or lower price, but at the same time, you're giving away the store to the rich developers who want all kinds of exceptions, modifications, you name it. And a lot of the decisions that are important to the quality of life are being left to bureaucrats. I mean, you know, where is the, you know, we talk about stormwater in schools, blah, blah. I haven't heard anybody talk about healthcare. You know, where are you going to take and find doctors for 180,000 people that you want to, this council or the previous council thinks we should bring into the county? And then on top of that, we're having these discussions about all the, it's a money bill. Where's the study about the cost of growth in Anaronda County? It's not there.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill 7224 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 72-24.
Bill number 7224, in ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, Public Works, Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Housing Attainability Act of 2024.
Do my colleagues have any further comments on Bill 72-24 at this time? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. I just want to start off responding that this bill is not intended to bring anyone into the county. People come to this county when they find jobs here, and many of the people that will benefit from this legislation already live here. They are living in doubled-up homes. They are couch surfing. They are living in cars. They are living in temporary shelters. They work here, but they live two counties away because they can't afford to live here. So this is to accommodate those people who are our neighbors. I'm going to support this bill and vote yes tonight, but I want the folks that have raised concerns about the environmental impact of this bill to know that I have heard them. And there were a number of scenarios that have been raised through communications over the past week or so that I looked at very carefully and raised and turned back to our administrative staff, who is, who is made up of the same people who will implement this bill, to find out how these various scenarios will play out. I worked on this bill since, I think, what did we start, February?
January 16th.
Not that anyone's counting the dates, since January. So we've been working on this legislation for a really long time, and we've invested a lot in it. Every piece of legislation, especially a big one like this, reflects compromise. There were lots of pieces, as we worked through the different aspects of the bill, where there wasn't necessarily 100% agreement, but we had to come up with what we thought was the best for the, for the individuals in the county, for the land of the county. We talk about representing people. We also represent the land. That is our resource that we need to take care of. And I think we have a very good compromise. And, you know, one of the, one of my biggest regrets over the past six years on the council is that we started working on an MPDU bill in 2019, and we had a meeting on it, I think, I don't know, maybe March 6, 2020, if that date, somewhere in that week?
That sounds about right.
If that date rings any bells, you can see why we're only now working on it again in 2023 and 2024. We've lost three, four years. Well, four, it will be five years by the time we actually get to the implementation date of this bill. We cannot wait a minute longer. That said, there is absolutely no harm in considering, in continuing to consider the, the concerns that individuals and organizations have raised over the past week tonight by continuing. And I appreciate the county executive's position, the idea of bringing together a group to look and see, are there impacts that we haven't, that we haven't identified? The scenarios that I looked at, I felt comfortable with the outcomes. You can't create new housing without building on some greenfields, where there will be, there will be greenfields. But I also know that there will be a redevelopment bill coming forward that will, that the whole purpose of is to incentivize not using greenfield, to build on land that, you know, that is underutilized and could be better utilized. So I'm going to support this bill, and I really just want to thank, I know there's going to be a lot of thank yous, but I'm going to start them right now. I'm going to thank council member, or council chair Pickard for leading this effort, and Julie Hummer, who also contributed enormous amount of time. And I don't know if she, I don't know if she's in the room, but Kristin Etzel deserves an enormous amount of credit. The county staff, the stakeholders who participated, this was an enormous lift. I mean, a 50-page bill is probably one of the longest bills that we've considered during my time on the council. So it's, it may not be perfect, but it needs to get done. And if we find flaws, we can consider ways to improve the bill, but the time to pass it is tonight. And so that, that are, those are my comments.
Ms. Hummer? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few questions for, so I was not a part of the coalition that met this year. I did read the bill over the last few months and certainly didn't see any eye-popping things that had popped out, because MPDUs are super important to me. I guess just to clear up some of the confusion in the audience, was it intentional that the expansion of some activities for the non-MPDU spaces, was that a deliberate action by the committee? Was that, were you all aware of that as the bill was being drafted?
Hi, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Yes, that was intentional. Councilwoman Smith.
Chair, the county executive mentioned that he is, regardless of the outcome, he would be willing, if it passed, that he would be willing to meet, to remediate any sort of activities that, that make impacts in areas that, at least, you know, for some that were unforeseen, certainly in the community. Is that, how, are you all committed to that same sort of effort?
Short answer is yes. I mean, the reality is, all legislations live in document that is continually being tweaked in terms of there's, we have eight months before this bill goes into effect. As a result, as we are putting this program in place, if this or any other unintended consequences arise, obviously, we'll continue to revisit, continue to tweak, and come out with recommendations. As the county executive noted in this correspondence, if this council passes this bill today, his plan is to convene a, some stakeholders to present recommendations that I'm sure at some point would be introduced in the near future. So I hope that answers your question.
No, it does. I'm just wanted to, you ought to say that, not me. You know, I know all too well about not having home security, or I've mentioned this before, that when I was 18, 17, part of the reason I went to the military is because my mother lost her home. And so that last six months of my senior and high school, I was fortunately able to go find a little small room in my aunt's basement, and then the rest of the kids all kind of went to other places. We kind of lost our homes. I know what it feels like to not have a place, to not have your friends be able to come over, and to not have that stability, and it sucks. And so MPDUs, in my mind, I believe in them, and I think that they are a method to attain more affordable housing. I wish we can go bigger, to be honest with you. So I'm hoping that we can find a way to mitigate some of the, you know, my intention was to do those expansions, certainly for areas that were going to be MPDU-impacted areas. But for the sake of finding and helping someone like me who's 16 or 17, or even some young adult who's just starting out and wanting a place, I am certainly interested in making sure that they have every available option possible to have a home. And so tonight, I will be supporting this, this legislation. But I also want us to go back and remediate some of the issues that have been called out, because they do give me concern. But I also want that family to have a place to sleep at night, no matter what. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes. So, you know, Plan 2040 was mentioned several times tonight, and that is a guiding document for our plans moving forward. There are three pillars to it, and we have to address all of those with equal priorities. And one of them is the green pillar, to make sure that we are increasing our investments in restoration and protection of our green spaces. Then there's smart development, which includes promoting redevelopment of underutilized properties, which I've heard many times tonight. And thankfully, coming up shortly, we're going to have a redevelopment bill that will just do that, so that we can look at our brownfields, our underutilized commercial spaces that we all know have little or no stormwater mitigation to them, but we could approve them to do that. So we'll be addressing that pillar as well. And then we have the equitable pillar, which says that we are going to provide more housing options throughout the county. We can, we are called on to weigh all of those and make those all priorities. Mr. Smith asked this to clarify, and I want to stress it again, the
The option for the different bulk regulation changes and things that we have in here has always been a part of this bill. It's unfortunate if some people did not realize that as we were writing this, but this has always been a feature of the bill, because this is not simply an MPDU bill. This is the Housing Attainability Act, and it is designed to increase the housing options and the attainability of housing at all price points throughout this county. So MPDU's are an important part of that, because it does set a threshold for our more middle-income families, but also increasing density so that we can build more carefully and smartly, that has to be required, too. That's part of missing metal. So including these smaller parcels of one where we may be able to do that, that has been a feature of this bill from our very first discussions about it. So that was not a new aspect. I'm hearing everyone for this. As Mr. Evelyn said, legislation is a living document. It's not set in stone. We, you see us all the time going back and improving bills when we see that something's not working, or things have changed, or what come up, and we can always do that with this as well. But this is a good bill. This gets us started. This provides many options for housing. This is one tool in the toolbox. We say that again and again when we have this legislation, because no one thing is going to fix it. This is not going to usher in a landslide of development. That's not how development works. That's not how the provisions in the code work to do this, but it's going to open some doors and give us some more options. I'm excited to pass this bill. I'm excited us to move on and very soon pass the redevelopment bill, so that we are adding bigger and bigger tools to our toolbox where we really make a difference. But again, this is a housing attainability bill. It's not just MPDU's. We are looking for ways to increase our housing production in a smart method throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. I want to take a minute. We have, we've said some thank yous. I want to, I want to take a minute to say them again, because the people at the table sitting there have worked along with us. I think by about May, we'd calculated over a combined 500-plus hours. That was May. It's now October 7. There's been a tremendous amount of work, and everyone's expertise came into play. So I, it was somewhat like nails on the chalkboard, hearing things about paving over wetlands and steep slopes and where we can't build and don't build. So when we reconvene, if there's going to be a reconvening of coalitions, I want to make sure that we maintain the expertise in the room so that we don't put out myths and disinformation. It's a, it's a plague on our country right now, and we need to be clear in our intentions, our goals, and how we achieve those. The questions were answered. This bill does not decrease any or weaken any of our environmental policies. MPDU's, we will, when we pass this bill tonight, come away with the highest thresholds for moderately priced dwelling units in the state. When we require, we mandate market-rate developers to build and sell or rent below market, there's no tax credit, there's no subsidy, they're having to reach that attainable, moderately priced dwelling unit price point with a little bit, a little bit of density, a little bit of lot size, so we're not building McMansions, which is really the equivalent of sprawl. Let's understand all of our land use terminology when we're in these coalitions. Sprawl is McMansions. So when you talk about wanting to take those one-to-nine unit minor subdivisions and not allow for reapportioning through bulk regulations and lot sizes, you're saying, I want McMansions near me. I don't want a villa for my retiring parents. That's what you're saying. That's what sprawl is. So being allowed to take some lot sizes and a little bulk reg, a little nip and tuck here, is going to get to the scarcity of housing inventory in this country, along, in this county, in every price point. And once again, we've not weakened any of our environmental regulations. So part of me tonight wants to say, God bless America, I can't do this anymore. I can't go into another work group on MPDU's. But the other side of me says, if I don't participate, what is this policy going to look like? And are we going to gut it and end up right back at the status quo, where the winners keep winning and the rest of us, the middle class, and those who are working hard in this county, good luck? So of course, I will be involved if the county executive needs to convene some people to continue talking about this policy, but I'm not gutting this bill. You're not going to do it with my help. Ms. Hummer?
I'm sorry, I forgot something. I do not want to end the night without thanking specifically some of the people who've really involved in this. We did mention Kristin Etzel before, who's the aide for Ms. Pickard, who's done yeoman's work. My colleagues, Ms. Pickard, Ms. Rodvian, Mr. Smith, very grateful. From the administration, Ethan Hunt and Jansen Evelyn have been tireless in this from OPZ. Lynn Miller has been a font of experience and wisdom for everything that came through. And Lori Blair Klosmeyer worked tirelessly to draft this very long bill. And I know I'm, Aram Karpewitz from ACDS, I know I'm leaving out others, but I want to specifically call out, because they have been very instrumental in sharing their expertise on all issues when it comes around land use and things that coming. And we really worked very collaboratively and together. And so I just want to thank all of the county staff that was involved in this.
That was where I was going. I got off track. Are there any further comments on Bill 72-24 at this time? Would the administration like to say anything else? That's wise. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 7224. Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
For in the affirmative, three, and the negative, Bill Number 7224 has passed. Where's my script? Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time?
Madam Chair?
Sir?
Sorry, I missed the vote on Bill 7124. Madam Secretary, can you please add me as an "I" vote on that legislation?
Yes, noted, Mr. Volkey. So the vote on 7124 for the record is seven in the affirmative and none in the negatives, so 7124 has still passed. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Second, Rodvian.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, October 15, 2024, at 9:00 a.m., when we will meet here in the chambers for the council work session, which will begin by sitting as the Board of Health. Have a great night, be safe.